Good morning, everyone. Sorry running a couple of minutes late. We're going to ask our clerk to call the roll to convene our board of supervisors meeting.
Good morning. Let the record reflect all supervisors are present with supervisor Lopez appearing via video conference.
And for the record, Supervisor Lopez has a communicable disease which qualifies as the just cause exemption under AB 2449 to be allowed to attend remotely and there is no vote required on that.
Great, thank you. And I think we have Diego Celis on Zoom today to make it the announcement for Spanish interpretation. Thank you very much. And I wanted to ask Supervisor Askew to lead us today in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I would like to be pleased to be the buyer of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, popular, and just for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for joining us for this meeting. It's a continuation from yesterday's county budget meetings. We decided to reconvene today to give our Sheriff Tina Nieto an opportunity to present on her county, her department's budget. And we also want to extend our prayers also to our deputy sheriff who was injured yesterday in the line of duty. So our prayers and our thoughts go out to him and his recovery. And we'll pass it to Sheriff Tina Nieto. Thank you, Sheriff.
You're good. You should be hot.
Are we hot? So I'll just talk loud. It's a small chamber. So thank you very much for allowing us to move our budget here into today because of what happened yesterday in the city of Salinas. First of all, I just want to thank all the other mutual agencies that assisted us during what was a very, turned out to be a very tragic incident in our county. I also want to reach out and thank the board of supervisors. I got all the texts and the prayers and stuff. And your well wishes for our deputy. I do know that you care, but I'm hoping that you show that in your actions today as we go into budget. You know, my thing coming into office as your sheriff representing the county is that I want to make our communities as safe as we possibly can make them. And I understand there's a lot of ways to get to safety. But after looking at the numbers with me today, I have under Sheriff Keith Boyd. I have Chief Eddie Anderson, who's in charge of our administrative bureau. So he's, so these are my two people that really understand the budget a lot more. I can tell you, I understand it from being a police professional in this business for 34 years. And the county has continued to cut budgets. And I know they've cut budgets across. It's not just the sheriff's office. But, you know, we're trying to share the stuff. But, but here's what I can say to you. I know the county is hurting. I know the county, if you looked at the county as a body, you know, that's body is hurting. But the sheriff's department is like a major organ in that body. And you have to get the major organ working. If you're going to get the body working before you start working on the plastic surgery, as I say, fixing the nose. So I hope that you hear the things that we're saying about the sheriff's office, why we have the needs that we have so that we can create the best service we can for our county, just based on what's going on fiscally. But in addition to that, I know that Sheriff or Under Sheriff Boyd is going to talk a little bit about the Hernandez settlement. This is a settlement since 2013 that the board agreed to, not necessarily you, but whoever was sitting on the board at that time. And we need to meet those demands of the Hernandez settlement. One, it's the compassionate thing to do for our incarcerated population. And it's also the right thing to do for your constituents and our taxpayers, because we're spending a lot of money on the settlement that me as the sheriff, I cannot do the things that I need to do to create public safety in the way that I see public safety. Because the, we are paying into the settlement year after year. So we need to meet those mandates. So that the numbers that we're asking for is just so we can get in compliance and do the right thing. And if we don't find this, it's, I don't, I don't know how to do it. I'm always out there. I tell people, look, show me how to do it. If you got a better idea, I don't think I'm the smartest person in the room. Actually, I think everyone else is smarter than me. That's always been my mantra. But we really have put some deep analysis, some deep thought. We've, you know, brought in auditors, talked to experts, and we need these things if we're going to get the, at least the sheriff's department working properly, just to basic standards. So I just want to thank the board again for moving the meeting to today so that we could have, you know, I guess our moment just to address this issue. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Under Sheriff Boyd.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for taking time this morning. Before I get into representation, I just want to make a statement. Yesterday, it's one of the most trying days of my career when you evaluate any time an officer, a deputy, is injured, wounded in the line of duty. In my 28 years, I've encountered many things, assuming the incident command of that incident yesterday and overseeing over probably 200 to 250 law enforcement professionals that responded to the scene from across this county, Santa Cruz County, state assets, federal assets, all coming here to Monterey to support us, to support our community. from across this county, Santa Cruz County, state assets, federal assets, all coming here to Monterey to support us, to support our community, and to ensure that we could have the resources we needed with personnel, personnel available to support and try to peacefully resolve that incident. Unfortunately, it didn't end the way we want. It didn't end the way all of us would have prayed that it would have ended. But it was a trying day. And that circles right into a part of this presentation and what we as a sheriff's office are asking for. We're asking for staffing. We recognize it's a shared county, but we're asking for staffing. We're asking for staffing to ensure that we can meet the needs of the community, that we can meet the needs that the board expects of us, that the constituents expect of us, that our incarcerated population expects of us. And we're hoping that after seeing this, that we'll be able to come to and, you know, a path forward as a collaborative body, recognizing what we do as a partner in this organization, as the sheriff said, an organ in this county. So with that, I'm going to, I'm going to go into this and get started. So coming into the budget cycle and reviewing the budget book and such, the current CAO recommended budget that you're reviewing for the sheriff's office is $150 million. It does list the sheriff's office as having 468 positions, but please note, only 463 of those positions are actually funded. It's kind of a play on cards to show that we have 468 positions, but we don't. We have 463. We can only put 463 people into effect each day, not 468. We are requesting 153 million, 153, 800,000 million, you know, when we're looking at this. Basically, we're looking to add seven positions to the organization and refund five that were defunded last fiscal year, the current fiscal year. Since the sheriff took office in December, December 30th of 2022, we have worked diligently to develop a recruitment and staffing plan to fill the department, all of our vacancies by the end of August this year. Currently, we have 49 vacancies in the organization. And that does not even include, at the time this was written, excuse me, it's 49, it's 45 now. We've hired a few people since I put this together a couple of weeks ago. But that does not even include the five that we carry on our books but are unfunded. We have 20 sworn vacancies at this time, not 25. If you add the five unfunded, we have 25. We have a current deputy sheriff recruitment open and continuous. We have, of that 12 deputies on schedule, we were able to get eight hired. And we're working on more, who started the academy this past Monday. We have, we're planning another 12 deputies to be hired for the August of 2023 academy. We currently have seven vacancies at our sergeant rank. The first line supervisor is critical for the accountability of the organization. The community demands and expects accountability among the sheriff's office. Accountability is how we reduce litigation. It's how we save the county money. We put layers into the, into the department to ensure staff can have the support they need and to be held accountable when they're not doing what they should be doing, to ensure they do everything right every day. We have three commander vacancies currently open. That's our first line mid-management. Again, accountability. When you're talking about building a culture as the sheriff is pushing forward in the organization and us as the executive team are working with her on, it's very difficult when you're lacking in your management positions. It's challenging to staff your needs. We do have a sergeant recruitment currently open. It closed. We have interviews scheduled that are coming up in the next two weeks, and we expect to fill those vacancies. But when you fill those sergeants' vacancies, because it's an internal recruitment, that 25 vacancy, when you think about the 20 plus the five, will now become 32 deputies. Because we're going to promote seven deputies up. The commander recruitment, it should be, we're working with HR at the moment to get it into the Civil Rights Office for review with a goal of opening it in the next two weeks. That will be open to the, to outside the organization. But if we promote from within, three sergeants go up, that makes that sergeants 10, that makes that sworn staff 35 deputies that we have to fill. But we have plans in place. We are getting the numbers. We've, we've increased our recruitment strategy. We're doing more testing. We are confident we will meet our goal by the end of August. On top of that, we have our professional staff, the core of the organization, when you think about it, those behind the scene that do the work every day that may not get recognized because they're not in the field. But as like yesterday, our professional staff rose to the occasion to deal with phone calls coming in, to deal with community support, to come out and help us in the positions we needed to ensure that we could resolve that incident. We have 24 recruitments open, the majority, 24 vacancies, and the majority of those positions are open recruitments with pending interviews and hirings, you know, in place. We're also working to do something the organization didn't do before the sheriff came to office, which one of the challenges with hiring is expediting people through the hiring process, so you don't lose another. The background process can be very tedious. With state standards under SB2, we've had changes. We have more requirements we have to do as part of the background. Well, we're working to take deputies within the organization and create a collateral background investigative unit. Then provide those deputies with the training through posts, which is mandated before we put them into that situation. So then we're able to do 15 to 20 more backgrounds a month, which allows us to get more people through the door. The more people we get through the door, the more money we can save the county in time because we're creating efficiency and better use of our resources. Compounding our challenges, and this is, this is a difficult one. We have, we have 43 employees on industrial leave issues. Okay, that puts us at about 20% of our sworn staff at any given time right now. But you can think about them are out either vacant or out on leave, challenging to say the least. We are working with risk management, HR, to ensure staff get the expedited care they need. So hopefully, we can get them back to healthy and back to work. But we also run into situations where sometimes people don't come back. And, and, and we're working to make sure, though, that the staff have what they need. Biggest challenge the sheriff's office is facing right now is the Hernandez settlement, 2013 lawsuit. In 2015, the Board of Supervisors became a signatory to that lawsuit, not the sheriff, the Board of Supervisors. The sheriff runs the jail. We oversee the terms and conditions that are in that settlement, but the board signed off on that agreement, ensuring that the county would meet its needs. Jail staffing is impacted by that settlement. We have a federal judge who has, using five federal monitors. And that judge and those monitors dictate terms for us. They dictate our staffing. They require a certain level of staffing that we have to have to ensure that we're able to meet the needs that our incarcerated population deserves and depends, as well as our community. Just because somebody's in jail does not mean they're not a human being. It does not mean they don't deserve the care and the compassion of any other person in this world. They deserve to be treated fair and equitably. And we have an obligation specifically under the settlement, on top of our obligation as human beings, to serve them. We also operate under Border Corrections Title 15 standards, and we're currently running, and I say 200 to 250 hours a day every 24 hours, and that's probably closer to 300 right now. Okay, that's, that's about $7 million of overtime a year, when you think about numbers and dollars. We have federal monitors who oversee our medical program, our mental health program, our dental program, our ADA program, and our ADA facilities program. In the eight years that we have been under this settlement, we've only made about 35% compliance as a, as a county. And I say it as a county because it's a county obligation. And, and really, this says 100 focus areas. As we dug deeper, it's probably closer, honestly, 100 per monitor. Okay, with a 35% rate. We need to implement more focused oversight within the organization, within the jail, to ensure that we're meeting the terms, we're meeting the deadlines of our, the plaintiffs' attorneys of Rosenbean, meeting the deadlines of the, the monitors. And that's where we need the staffing. Our original augmentation was $7.2 million. And of that 7.2 million, it was 3.38 million for Wellpath, and that's been granted. That was, but, but the irony of it is, is in our baseline budget prior to the CAO's recommended budget, we were asked to submit for this as an augmentation request. Instead of it being included in the baseline, when the board approved this last December, we knew it was coming, and this is directly relates to the health and wellness of our incarcerated population. But yet it wasn't in our baseline. We had to come in and ask for it as if it was an augmentation need, whereas it's a standard of care. It's a basic necessity that should have been in our baseline. So on paper, it looks like we're asking for money to support the needs, but it's money we should have been provided right from the get-go. It should, it's money that the incarcerated population deserves. That leaves us with a remaining augmentation from our original 7.2 of 3.8 million. I want to talk about the settlement a little bit more. When I put this together, that 7.4 million to date approximate, that doesn't include the monitors fees. Our original settlement with the, the settlement was about approximately 4.2 million. And we pay approximately $400,000 a year in attorney's fees for various motions and such to the plaintiffs and such. When you add on top of that about the $100,000 that each monitor is paid, we, as an entity between us and Wellpath, are putting out an average of approximately $1 million per year on this settlement. If you add that $1 million to the 4.2 million initially, that's approximately 12.2 million that county and Wellpath is its partner, with Wellpath paying a small fraction has paid over those years. Those are funds that can be used better for better services elsewhere in the county. When you think about it, $1 million to put back into the sheriff's office, $1 million to put into health, $1 million to put into roads, $1 million to put in basic community needs into the unhoused population. But yet we're putting that $1 million in the fees. Talk about a little about staffing, as I indicated, our staffing. So our first line supervisors, deputy staffing since 2015, or in 2015, we had 141 deputies assigned to the jail and Corrections Bureau. We had 124 in enforcement out in the field. And there's, it's a little back and forth. The next year, we lost five. The next year, we had a little gain, so it's only a net loss of two since 2015. This is where you start to see it is in 2018, Sheriff's Office bumped its staffing to 143 deputies in the jail. But we didn't add bodies to the organization. The county did not add bodies to the sheriff's office. What happened was, is we transferred 10 bodies, 10, 10 positions from the enforcement. We took 10 bodies from the street that provide services to the community in their time of need, and we put them into the jail. So, but our net loss of personnel still stayed at four. Then the next year, in 2019, there was a bit of a gain because some personnel were added to both bureaus. And then in 2020, status quo, and then it started to go, excuse me, it was 2021 when they moved to, excuse my, my numbers. That's when it went down to 112, but it bumped it up to 157. And then we started going downhill. 2023, five unfunded positions that we carry on the books. So that's five. Then we get into our sergeants, where I talk about our first line supervisors, the, those that ensure accountability on a day-to-day basis. Those that call our staff and ensure that they do the right thing each day. 43 in 15 goes up to 44 in 1941, 2022 drops to 37. So we've, we've lost the ability to create accountability. Plus, they've transferred, some of those staff are being in, in dealing with, one was dealing with the Hernandez settlement. One sheriff sergeant was assigned to deal with Hernandez. That's it on a day-to-day basis. 2011, mid-management commander. 2015, we had 11, drops down in 2020 to nine. So now we're losing our management oversight. Those are the people that have first line authority to actually implement change. They have, they're in a position of authority to implement change. When you add that up since the start of the settlement, it's 13 over the eight years. But really, that's 13 over the eight years because there was a growth in those first couple of years. But in the last 48 months, we've lost nine deputy sheriffs from the organization, three sergeants, and two commanders, 14 deputies. And remember, 10, and, and three years ago, we moved 10 people from field services to the jail. So the community, the day-to-day community, they lost services. Our, as Sheriff said, we brought in auditors. We've conducted a lot of review. You all deserve that. You demanded that. The sheriff made it a fixed point. We were going to evaluate the organization to ensure, how do we make it better? How do we make it something to be, the community to be proud of, to be the best organization in the state, if not the country? And, and we need to increase staffing to get out of the settlement. We can either keep paying fees, or we can implement some money with the goal that create efficiency, reduce fees, get out of the settlement. Allow that funding to go elsewhere. We're asking to increase our deputy sheriffs, to increase daily greater oversight of our correctional facility. By adding our deputies, one of the challenges we face is the movement of incarcerated population throughout the facility to get to their medical appointments, to get to their dental appointments, to get to their mental health appointments, and get to their programs. We only have so many deputies to move the incarcerated population. But we have to move them to meet the requirements of the settlement. And if we can't get them where they need to be, if we can't get our incarcerated people to the, to the treatment they need, how do we give them the services? If we can't get the mental health care because we don't have the people to get them from their cell to a doctor, how do we get out of the settlement? How do they get the care they need to get better? We're looking to add a sergeant in our process to increase supervision in the, in the, in the jail, to be able to create that compliance division, increase supervision, settlement man, adding to ask a commander. What we've done to date is we've created a compliance division in the jail, something that did not exist before the sheriff took office. Something that in speaking with our monitors, they've been adamant that those, the counties where they've monitored, those that have not created compliance division, they don't get out of these settlements. They don't have the resources to get out of that fixed personnel dealing with them. Prior to the sheriff's taking office, as I said, only one sergeant was assigned on a full-time basis to oversee the program. Everybody else, all the other management team was sharing duties on a day-to-day basis in the jail, as well as trying to beat the, the, the process for the settlement. What, we've created a compliance division. We rotated the, the jail captain to oversee the compliance division. We've rotated a commander from the jail to be in the compliance division. We took that sergeant, put him in the compliance division. We put a, we're using deputies on modified duty into the compliance division. We're also working to reallocate positions within the organization, so we use existing funding to, to, we'll come back to the, to the HR soon, existing funding to potentially create a different position that we can move without asking the board for money to move somebody into the compliance like in an office assistant and clerical to help process the volume of paperwork we have to do. But by doing this, creating this compliance division, what we've done is, is rob Peter to pay Paul. We've taken personnel again from other areas where we need them to staff this up. That means other areas are going to suffer while we try to create this without adding the resources, which is why we've asked for this, the personnel to create the compliance decision, one new sheriff's commander, one new sergeant. But when you think about it, we've lost five over the last four months, 40, combined over the last four years. We're just asking for two back, two of five. And that total cost is approximately $525,000. The reassignment of the sheriff's captain to the compliance division, zero cost to the county for additional funding. We're just, we're absorbing that, reallocating. And the reassignment of the professional staff, we're going to put there, zero cost to the county. We're just going to reallocate it to existing funding. What we're also asking for is, we'd like to get, ask you to refund the five deputy sheriffs that we carry on our books that were defunded last year. That would be a cost of $949,000. With the funding of those positions, we would read, those deputies would be assigned to the Corrections Operation Bureau to increase our staffing. It allows us a greater opportunity to meet compliance, to move the incarcerated population to programs, mental health, dental, medical appointments, and to provide our staff a sense of relief. We can put some bodies in there. We can provide our staff a sense of relief. Potentially, we can impact our sick calls. We can impact our injuries, and we can reduce other expenses, potentially. It's been shown elsewhere. Increase staffing, reduce other issues of concern. This is a slide here that kind of shows a pie of what we've asked for. And we did ask for funding to deal with some fleet issues, and we'll talk about that in a minute. But the key ones here is the red pie piece and the yellow piece. I wasn't able to get them side by side. I wish I could have. But, and with dealing with yesterday, it was a little hard to make the change. When you think about it, the bulk of what we're really asking for is, is seven sworn personnel specifically to focus on the Hernandez settlement, the board is a party to. There's some other cannabis vehicles, capital improvements, and some professional staff, and I'll talk about those in the next following slides. On top of our seven sworn, we did ask for an additional $700,000 in funding to create a records director, an accountant, three, a record specialist, an accountant technician, and a, and a disc. And, and with respect to each records director, why do we need a records director? Sheriff's Office has 463 employees. We are decentralized. We have a main office in Salinas. We have a jail in Salinas. We have a station in Monterey. We have a station in King City. We have records personnel working out of Salinas, King City, and Monterey. You know who oversees the records division? My IT manager. My information services technology maner oversees records. She's housed in a different part of the thing. And as you all, I'm sure, know, technology has blossomed in law enforcement over the last 10 years. She's busy every day dealing with ongoing projects, computers, and running her staff to just meet the needs, technology. It's challenging to oversee a division and records and things that we can get in a lot of trouble with Public Records Act requests and such. It's challenging to oversee a division and records and things that we can get in a lot of trouble with public records act requests and such. So the reason why I'm asking that I've asked for a records director on behalf of the sheriff is to allow us to have a focused director to oversee our records and warrants and ensure that we have coordination among our three records locations. And such our accountant, three sheriff's office has $150 million budget. Asking for 153, hopefully we'll we'll find a compromise. Most counties and according to my finance manager, Jonah Bell Perez. Most departments our size have our finance manager is a finance is a finance is a two. Most of them are threes, like a finance manager three. So we're comparatively, we're already working with somebody in theory that's at a lower level. But we have accounts we need to audit. We have asset forfeiture. We have all these things. These accounts are from the prior administration are back due are overdue. But you only have so many people to do what needs to be done to protect the county. Protect the county with those audits, to protect the sheriff's office with those audits. So we asked for the accountant, three to provide the accounting level that we need to to start managing the budget. Because our goal is to push the oversight of the budget down in the organization. It's not just a budget that the sheriff oversees or I oversee or the chiefs, but every we have to push this down. So every employee understands the budget because we're not the federal government. We don't print money at our at a whim. We have a budget and we have to hear that. I know this fiscal year we're at a deficit and I apologize for that. But it's not going to happen in the future because we're planning the steps that need to be done to create oversight. We have to make our staff understand it. The accountant technician falls into that budget management. It falls into processing the payroll of staff. It it falls into pass processing when we have disasters to ensure that we get our FEMA reimbursement and such. We're looking for the record specialists. Public Record Act requests are off the hook now. When you talk about law enforcement and modern law enforcement, we're inundated requests. We're inundated with record requests. And we're asking for the DISC because you know what? And you charm all we don't have body cameras, shocking, right? One of the few agencies in the state of California. I mean, it's it's really odd that we don't have a bottom camera in today's society. But I'll tell you, when we get a body camera. We're going to put them not only in field services and we're working right now. Chief Hoin is overseeing a body camera project. We're working to get a grant to help hopefully offset the cost. We're working with multiple vendors to try to see what the best program will be long term. We intend to put those body cameras not only in the field, but in the jail. So our staff in the jail will be wearing body cameras as well. Greater oversight, greater accountability. But data is large. It will be expensive. There will be public record act requests. There will be searches. The DISC is specifically to come in to add us the technology representative to focus on being able to handle that increased volume, even though it likely will be cloud based. We're going to need somebody that can just get through that system quickly and understand it. We're also going to add car cameras. So we have in car cameras on top of body cameras. So that way even get a better oversight. The car cameras are great because then you get a camera view of your passenger compartment where you have your incarcerated subject. So you can get monitoring of them as well. Increase safety for our incarcerated population. We're asking for outfit. Be our or plan increase of our replacement program generator. Look, these this this $1.6 million, we can absorb that. We will find a way to absorb that. I'm will I'm we're committed to finding a way to absorbing that. We understand it because the goal is the bodies we need because that satisfies Hernandez. Cars, not really Hernandez and we can find money. And with the way cars are coming in these days. The 21 cars we have coming, it might take six years. We'll make it work. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Want to bring this back to supervisors and I see supervisor Church.
I I think yesterday we see the importance of a well funded and incompetent sheriff's department. And, you know, I I look back here over the the last few years where you see 35% compliance on Hernandez. It's eight years to do that. There's been some tight times in there, I'm sure. But there's also times that we were we were flush and we didn't have the leadership in the in the sheriff's department to go and make this kind of request at that point. And that is a a you know, businessal oversight by the previous administration. But I, you know, I think there's the leadership now that this county needs. That is, you know, stepping up to try to deal with this, this. This is this is something we need to get behind or get behind us, this whole Hernandez lawsuit, because it is costing us so much money on other programs. And it's just gonna it's going to get tighter and harder. And if we, you know, looking at this now, if we don't do this this year, it's not going to get any easier because we're facing even tougher times. So I I'm looking at this as whatever investment we put into here. We're getting some of this money back because it's going to get us out of out of this. I'm you know, I I look at this as the, I think it's about close to one half million to 949 and the the 525 is as seeming essential to get us past this. And so I'm I'm in favor of that. I want to be real clear. I know we're we're cutting down on the on our contingency fund significantly. And this is a big chunk of that. But it's it it's just something we have to do is the way I see it. My my only question would be with this funding. What would be your anticipated timeline on us getting out of this lawsuit?
When the sheriff took office, we had a long conversation about Hernandez. From the time she the election concluded till she took office, many conversations, much focus on Hernandez settlement. We we talked a lot about it. And when when the sheriff took office on December 30th, the mission, the directive. January 1st, 2023, 30 months. Okay, 30 months, 18 months from January 1st of 2023 to implement the programs, to implement the processes, to start showing the substantial compliance. Because it's to get out of the, we have to show substantial compliance. We don't have to be perfect. We have to show substantial compliance. But to make to show substantial compliance, you have to implement it and then maintain it. 18 months to implement, 12 months to maintain, 30 months to be out. That is the goal. That is the directive of the sheriff. And that was what we will do. One other note supervisor, as you brought mentioned about the nine and the money like our belief as part of this is as we implement the staffing, we'll be able to increase cost savings elsewhere. Overtime should go down by creating oversight, adding bodies. And we're projected to be three, three and a half, $4 million over budget overtime this year. By bringing overtime down in many ways, we're self paying for the 1.5 million we're asking you for. Okay, we're potentially even saving other funding that next year, our belief is that the next year, if we do this, do it right, we could even be a surplus. So can't guarantee it, but I'm just saying these are the plans and we're self paying and I'll pass to the sheriff if you have any comments.
Look, there's been a lot of thought into this Hernandez settlement during the campaign. I talked about it a lot. When I came into office, we were finally able to open the books. We've been very transparent about what's going on in the sheriffs. And we've been very transparent with the board and what we can answer legally. This is a different sheriff's office. I need the board support to help us all, the county. Again, this is a board that agreed on this Hernandez settlement. We need to get this thing behind us. Again, it's the it's the right thing to do. It's the compassionate thing to do. And it's something that the board signed on to and said, we will do. It's been since 2013, 2015, when we saw we sign this. Together, together as a county. We need to get this done.
Thank you. Good order supervisors, supervisor Adams.
Thank you. I'm going to start off by first just applauding you for the presentation. This is you. It was really so well done, well presented. The information was impeccable and I just wanted to make sure that I was able to say that. The other thing I just a couple of quick comments is that for my district, for most of the residents of my district, you're our only police department. And it matters a lot to me and it has always bothered me that we had so few deputies that were able to be on the streets, so to speak. Because, you know, you're all we got. So as I was going through all of the the numbers and everything else you have. I agree with my with my colleague. In fact, I had a couple of the same questions, but definitely in my opinion, we need to restore the funding for the existing positions without any question. I also really like the approach that you're taking to the compliance of division to really starting starting that so that we can get out of Hernandez. When you indicated that we're only at 35% compliance after such a long period of time. And I can't tell you how many times we've been in meetings for the for the board of supervisors and it's been, you know, well, we can't do that. You know, we've got Hernandez, you know, Hernandez, Hernandez. And it it has never made as much sense to me as it now does from the presentation that you've done. And one of the other things that has bothered me a great deal is the number, the amount of money and the numbers of people that we have coming from the sheriff's department that go out on disability. And your comments, I really just kind of want to pursue this to make sure that I was understanding it correctly. Is that the positions that you're talking about with the additional sergeants and et cetera? That you believe that that would be able to create a better situation within the rank and file? So that they would see before it gets to the point where somebody has to go out on disability? Is that sort of what you have in in mind?
Thank you supervisor for that question. Look, this is basic management 101. If you don't have the oversight, there are things that can happen with your workforce, right? First line supervisors, mid management, those people are needed so we can identify problems that are going on before they happen. We can keep doing things the same way, right? What is the definition of insanity, doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results? We are asking the board to give us something different from the board so we can implement this. Again, the board is welcome at any time to come over to the sheriff's office and we will walk you through everything. We are trying to be transparent as a sheriff's office. Again, there are certain things that we can't release, but that is legalese. And it's not because we're trying to hide anything from any of you. So yes, we need those bodies to help bring down the numbers of injuries that we could potentially have. There's a lot of I'm not going to get into my long speech about why first line leadership and mid mid level managers are needed that tie into these things. But the the quick answer is yes. And and this is based on studies. It shows that if you provide these basic things, these other things kind of self correct. But but also with the undershirt, because we've had many long late into the night conversations about all these things that were presented to you today.
Okay, thank you. Couple of other questions, just a a comment. Do you think that the whole issue regarding well path and the the numbers not being there, if you had to go back? My expectation is that was simply an accounting error that was made that was not something that was intentional. But and my hope is that that's, you know, what's come to fruition since it they the correction has been made in that. So I just kind of wanted to to.
Is is that with respect to the 3.3 million for the? Yeah, no, it's been to see it is it is in the CEO's recommended budget to fund that 3.3 million for the well past services.
Got it. Okay, just.
And to be honest, well past since the sheriff's took an office, we we've because of that process of developing internal compliance that we're absorbing right now. We have a very good collaboration process going on with well path. Between the executive manager team in the jail and the well path leadership. And then I have recurring meetings with well path because we're working together to create accountability within our provider. To understand that we have terms and conditions in their agreement. So we're we're they're they're thankful. They understand though that it's a business and there's expectations placed on them and failure to perform those expectations. It's a business like any other business. And and that's the one thing the sheriff has instituted, even though we're a public agency, a government, police, law enforcement, we're a business. Any business that runs a business that's in the red all the time, they get fired. Okay. And we have to be in the black and treat us like a business and that's what we're doing.
Thank you for that. And then a couple of quick other questions. The do you feel that you've got enough people coming in through the academies and enough people who are currently on on staff now to be able to move up at a rapid enough pace? You know, succession planning, you know, you I wish I bet you wish you'd been here, you know, an X number of months or years ago so that you could have everybody in place, but you know, just come and give me your thoughts about that at this point.
So I don't wish to have been here earlier because I really liked what I was doing before I became the sheriff. I think all of the people in Marina are applauding. But the one thing that I can say when it comes to succession planning and moving the people up. Our sheriff's office has always had the quality personnel there. The men and women that work for the sheriff's office are as dedicated as any group of individuals that I've worked with. And you all know my background. I've been around. I don't mean that in a bad way, but I've been around law enforcement. They're they are the professional staff, the sworn staff. They're professionals. They care about their community. What I do believe was lacking, though, was the oversight, was the leadership, was the value of our people. Was getting the story out. Because I do think the board of supervisors, again, this is my opinion, would have supported some of these things had it been explained to the board of supervisors.
Yeah, I agree and brought to us. Okay, that's so I think that was oh, just a couple of.
Can I add to the?
Yes.
As you talk like the hiring, getting them there. So Chief Anderson is overseeing our administrative bureau of hiring and recruitment comes out of that. And 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 I put a task to him, fill the fill the vacancies. And so we used to do quarterly recruitments. We're doing bi monthly. We used to just focus on our local academy. Look, if it's within 250 miles, we're going to get them. We're going to go get them. 250 miles is the valley. You know what? We pay more than the valley. Our focus is homegrown, right? We want people who have ties to this community because they're invested. They have commitment. They they believe in this community. They're here for a reason. But you know what? If I can go over to the valley to an academy where they pay, you know, and people are going to be like, you've got an opportunity. I can get to the patrol. Great, we're going to take the bodies. Why? Because we need to build that base layer to build a succession plan for the future.
We're going to have to have dedicated housing to sheriff recruits.
The county has its challenges, ma'am. Absolutely, there's challenges across the county. But but here's the one thing. The team that I've surrounded myself with, I'm accountable to all of you. And I hold them accountable in the same way that I'll hold myself accountable. They every chief here, you know, all the meetings and stuff. But accountability, accountability, integrity, leadership. I probably make them crazy because of the many questions that I ask them and and get them on timelines. But again, we are a public agency, but you have to run successful public agencies. You run like a business. You run like a business. If if we had been a business in the past, we we would probably not be here. But but it is a public agency. So we need to get to that standard, that standard of excellence that the constituents deserve in this county.
Thank you. And my colleagues are probably getting crazy because I keep asking questions. So I just have one or two more. And that one is about the 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 DISC, the body warrant, the cam. You indicated that there was the possibility of getting a grant for that.
Yes, we've we Chief Hoin and his staff have already applied for a grant through the federal government. COPS program and such for $600,000 for the grant. The grant period closes in September where awards are basically made in Septemberish. And then we we determine if we get the the appropriation from the federal government come October. That'll that will cover a portion of the costs. We're talking about 300 cameras roughly. But we're looking at part of that program to try to maximize services to reduce costs, like combine costs to try to make the value the best. So we create efficiency and cost savings at the same time. But the grant is on the works.
So if we did not put that 135 that you're 136, 137 that you're requesting in this current budget, would you be able to absorb that then? Is am I hearing that?
The grant is for equipment only, cannot cover personnel costs. So if if the 135 for the DISC was not funded, we would have to evaluate at that time. If we have the funding in the budget to absorb it, I'd hate to say we can absorb it today. Because personally, they absorb $4.9 million in unfunded stuff during the first half of this fiscal year. And we're coming to the board asking for money. So I'd rather wait to commit to whether or not we could absorb that 135 to add it when the cameras come online.
Okay, thank you for that. And then just finally, the records position, the records director position. Is that something that you could hold off like for the full year and maybe started in January or something? I'm just trying to come up with solutions to the budget issues that I I know that we're facing here.
Yes, the simple answer is yes. We have to fill some vacancies that we're currently recording for that we have that are closing. So we have some staff, baseline staff that we have to fill those positions. And as those come online, that's when the greater need for the oversight would be added. So, you know, we we can be again, a collaborative partner.
Great. Good.
But but supervisors or Adams, at some point, though, we would have to fill that that position because of oversight and the amount of requests that come into law enforcement and in today's law enforcement for public records requests. You have to have a records, you know, director. Quite honestly, I was very surprised when I came to this agency. You you have to have a records, you know, director. Quite honestly, I was very surprised when I came to this agency um that we weren't filling a position like that.
Good. Thank you for your answers and uh thank you for your patience.
Supervisor Askew, then we'll go to Supervisor Lopez.
Great. Um, I just, I'll start my comments by saying that, um, and I think I think I speak for my colleagues when I say that our hearts are with our injured deputy and we are all committed to supporting a full recovery for um that individual and their family. Um, and to all of our uh first responders who were with us yesterday um across the board and from other agencies, thank you. We are indebted to you. Thank you. Um, the uh Supervisor Adams mentioned the professionalism that you're bringing into this sheriff's office. I think increases our confidence and being able to contribute additional dollars to the sheriff's office. Uh, thank you for uh Sheriff Nieto for building a great team. Thank you for the presentation. Um, I think you've outlined some clear plans to move us forward. And I'm pleased to hear about the work happening uh to create uh the compliance division. I think that there's um uh, a lot more there and maybe we can have some more conversations about that, but I I really, really appreciate the leadership that you've um brought to us. Um, I did have two questions. One of them was about body cameras and you've kind of touched on that. Um, that may be something that we can, I think we'd look for, I'd look forward. I think the public, we had a public comment here yesterday, would look forward to hearing more about what your plans are in that regard. Um, I think it's something that I would definitely be supportive of uh moving forward. Um, the uh civil grand jury put out a report about the coroner's office just this last week. Um, and there were some uh concerning uh findings in that report uh that I'm assuming will also have cost implications and staffing requests. So I'm anticipating that they'll, that that you will either be, they'll be coming back to us with updates on what those needs are. Um, so I'm keeping that in mind as we move forward that there may be additional um it it cost uh implications for that. Um, in terms of the commander and the sergeant uh positions and getting the Hernandez lawsuit resolved uh thirty months, like you guys are ambitious. Uh, you're not here to mess around and um if that's something that we can, you think is reasonable and like uh doable and it's an actionable um result and the commander and sergeant positions are gonna help us uh get there, I can be supportive of that request today uh for those two positions. Um, in terms of the five unfunded sheriff positions, um, I just have to reference back. Uh, and if you'll bear with me, um, there is a lot of trust rebuilding that's happening between this board and the sheriff's office. Uh, and so um, I I think you're right that a part of the reason you're behind is because we didn't have that uh relationship in the way that we needed to previously. So I look forward to continuing to build on that relationship. Um, but given that there are still currently so many uh vacancies, when the board um uh funds positions that are currently vacant, once it it, once we allocate those, that million dollars to the sheriff's office, and this is just, you know, you know this, but for the public, um, we we no longer have control of how those dollars are spent. Um, and you have the ability, the sheriff's office would have ability to move those dollars around uh how, where you see needs being greatest. So I'm um, I'm I'm inclined to say, like, let's, let's keep filling positions, let's clear out the vacancies. Um, I'd be inclined to ask my colleagues to put um a million dollars of our contingency sort of in uh, holding it in contingency for as you fill those vacancies and have uh, uh, need to fund these additional five positions. Um, I'd be open to a conversation about how we can uh keep, hold that money available in contingency so long as it's actually going to be used for the positions um as as other, as we clear out the vacant positions. And I hope I was clear in how I explained that. Um, so I'm I'm open to that conversation uh and I look forward to holding you to that cost savings that you're speaking of. Um, uh, and then my final comment um is in regards to uh, I think there, just moving forward, I think there could be some um uh benefit to having some board and sheriff uh study set, study sessions on um both the Hernandez settlement. I think we talk about it, but I don't know how much the public or the rest of the county family knows about what that means and why that uh came to be. Um, I also think uh that I I'd be interested in some study sessions so we can support uh, uh, sharing information about some of the audits to the degree that information is shareable. I think we would all benefit from hearing more about your plan uh sheriff for uh how to uh move our sheriff's office into space where it is something that we can have um larger uh trust and um that the community feels like they understand what's happening and what what you're working on. So I look forward to supporting your team uh moving forward. Um, and I really, really, really appreciate the leadership that you're demonstrating uh for uh for our county, for our law enforcement and for um the understanding that public safety looks like a lot of things um and encompasses um, you know, a a broad range of how we, how we take care of one another. So thank you so much for uh the presentation today.
Thank you Supervisor Askew. We'll go Supervisor Lopez on Zoom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, yeah, I have one question for the sheriff, uh, the sheriff's team, and that is you mentioned that you had folks in the academy now and folks you plan on putting into the academy in August as well. Do you have numbers there so we understand sort of how many we're talking about?
We put eight, can you hear me? Okay. We put eight into the academy that began this week. Uh, we have a recruitment session that was this month. We have another one in July. Uh, our goal and and based on what our numbers have gone since the first of the year is we we fully expect twelve to fifteen in the August academy. Uh, Chief Anderson's also been tasked uh because the new academy opened, there are um unaffiliated attendees. There are individuals who are attending this current academy who don't have any uh current representation or commitment to an organization. We're gonna go uh, offer them jobs, you know? We're gonna go give them applications and and Chief's been tasked with that, so. And that's gonna go, so that adds to it Supervisor. Um, we're, we're eight this week. We're shooting for twelve to fifteen, but I, but I wholly expect it to be bigger. And I'm gonna pass to Sheriff.
Supervisor, thank you for that question too. Um, one thing though, I, the people that may be listening or watching this, um, I want to assure them, we're not lowering our standards. There, there's a lot of good people out there that uh would love to join our agency, our office and become uh sheriff and and serve the community. Um, we have to cast the net wider. We have to look at um how we do things and maybe look at it through a different lens. Um, for those who um, you know, sent their representatives at Supervisor Adams, thank you for being at our promotional ceremony. You heard the stories of the young people that were bringing on to the agency. Uh, the one thing I can tell you about my own personal philosophy and and my executive team is very aware of this is that sometimes people make mistakes in their lives. But if they show that they they can correct from those mistakes and they they've lived a life of service, then they can join our team and we'll give them that opportunity. And I don't think every agency sees the world the way I see it and brings that philosophy to their team. But we need to hire a community that looks like us, that feels like us, that can relate to us and and the last thing I'd like to add is that I talked about this a lot on the campaign trail, is that when you have a leadership team that shows they care and not just by saying the words, but by their actions, people want to come play for that team. It's good to be on a champion team. It's easier to recruit.
Thank you. So um, yeah, given the conversation here and what we've heard, I would be supportive of the two positions that we talked about on the management side. And then in terms of the five, obviously those are positions that I supported last year when they came forward as part of the AS, additional deputies. I would wonder though if there would be a response to a proposal from the sheriff's department of funding those at seventy-five percent for this year, given the recruiting timeline uh that you have. So obviously that would save us a little money, but then puts you guys in a position where it is in your budget and ready to go, given the position that you're in with folks in academy. Uh, starting in August, meaning they won't come on till late in the fall, if not early spring following year. That puts you in a position where you have the money necessary to make the offers. Is a seventy-five percent funding for this year in those positions acceptable?
Uh, Supervisor Lopez, yes, uh, based on the timeframes, that would, that would definitely work.
Great. Thank you.
Anything else Supervisor Lopez?
That's all for me, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you very much. And I want to thank the leadership team and Sheriff Nieto and all the staff that are here at this budget hearing. Um, I, I also want to just express wanting to uh have it um, work closer with the sheriff's department and trying to support the goals that you have. Uh, and also certainly the goals and trying to get out of the Hernandez lawsuit. I wish it was that easy, but the federal judge, um, despite whatever plan we do, whatever staffing we do, it's really up to that federal judge to um decide when the timing is right to bail us out. But the fact that you're coming forward with the plan on on on, at least coming and presenting a plan of how to, and a timeline, I think that's something that we haven't had before and it's refreshing to hear that. And I think the board needs to support that. Um, and I think out of all these requests, um, I I wish money was uh limitless, but we know that's not a reality and our 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 budget years are getting more difficult. Um, a good portion of yesterday's um early part of the meeting was just looking at the trends on increasing costs. Obviously, every time we're in negotiations with our different bargaining units, the costs have gone up. Uh, not to mention pension, healthcare, workers' comp, a lot of other uh significant expenses that that um um, pride limits on our ability to fulfill all the department requests. And so what was helpful yesterday was in the departments, um, some had very short um wish lists outside of whatever they were augmented. Um, um, and other, other departments had a a long list, but then they they said, we know the the budget's getting more difficult, but out of all these positions, these are the ones we really need. And that's really helpful, I think, to the board um, to helping us decide if we can't fund it all, what are the the top positions or the the top resources that you need um, certainly to implement in the coming year. And that's helpful for us versus trying to make that decision for you. Uh, because otherwise, this is pretty long and we don't know at the end of the day if we're gonna be able to fund everything. And yesterday, at the end of yesterday, there was a lot of uh, requests from the community, from different departments. And it, when we add it all up, it's in millions of more dollars and it was already cut, cutting into the almost just a majority of the contingency for next year. So that's gonna be our challenge um after, after we finish with your presentation here. Um, and I did want to just uh tell the public that um in our budget book, our thick budget book, um, the sheriff's budget is on page uh for uh three seventy-six. And and there you could see the two trends. One, one was that um staff, staffing, at least when I became a supervisor, has increased. Uh, five years ago, it was, and this is not just talking about just deputies, but all staffing for the entire department was at four hundred and forty-seven. And now it's at four sixty-eight. So it has been increased. There was a year that it peaked at uh four hundred and seventy-three positions. So that's uh just a drop of five. But the last years it's been at four sixty-eight. And then in terms of expenditures, um, um, five years ago, we were at a hundred and eleven million. Today it's at a hundred and, almost a hundred and fifty-eight million. So that's about twenty-nine, uh, twenty-nine percent more, forty-six million more. Uh, so I just wanted to put that in perspective too. It's not like we haven't um increased or there isn't a significant um, demand from the overall budget to the sheriff's department. We have put money there. And even when we're on the budget committee, um, we were always getting a lot of overruns on the overtime at the end of each fiscal year. So uh Supervisor Askew and I said, let's make the overtime budget more realistic. Um, and we increased that, but we still got a lot of overruns um and and on the overtime cost. So I I just want to put, put that in perspective that the board has um put some significant additional fundings forward just in the last five years. But we know that the staffing is a real issue for you, not only in the jail, but out in patrol. And there's a lot of other services um that are not patrol or jail that are important nonetheless to um, to your department. Um, so I I want to make sure, um, I want to support some positions. I just don't know what, what, what we're gonna be able to uh, uh, support overall, but I want to certainly support the key positions um here as well. So I'm kind of in line with Supervisor Lopez, um, but we just gotta see right now, either our next discussion, what we can um fund overall uh when we add the entire additional allocations for the coming fiscal year. Anything else from anybody? Yes, Supervisor Adams.
I'm just, I'd like to kind of.
Could, could I comment real quick on?
Go ahead.
Supervisor Leo, I, I thank you for your comments. I I just want to point out, every budget in the county has gone up in that same period from salaries and benefits. So it's not just the sheriff's office. I know we talked about the sheriff in that comment, but every budget in the county, if you look at their budgets in twenty fifteen versus their budgets today, they all have peaked probably at their highest levels when you talk about employee uh hourly rates and benefit costs. And that's a trend across our country. You know, one of the things that we deal with and the board deals with us as well is wage studies come out of the blue or increases come in, we're all hit with those, not just the sheriff's office, but all county departments. And yes, the sheriffs from the four-four-seven number to today did see increase, but the bulk of that was professional staff that occurred in the jail as, and to hit some of the the CCSs and the CSs where they had significant increases. On the sworn ranks, those deputies that are day-to-day engaged with our incarcerated population that are dealing with the security of our incarcerated population, the deputies out in the field providing the safety to the public, those numbers have gone down fourteen bodies over the last four years. And there was very little, and that's thirteen bodies over the last eight. So just to to comment, I just wanted to put that in perspective from us. It's not just us, it's everybody's in the same boat with money.
Yeah, thank you. I I would just like to sort of see if we have consensus on some of the things that have been asked for. So I I believe that I heard that um restoring the funding for the existing positions at seventy-five percent from Supervisor Lopez um was something I know I agreed on and I think it was Supervisor Lopez's suggestion, so I expect he does. And I think that you were in the same category.
Yeah, I I'm in the same, in the same category. I do have one, but we're getting a consensus here. I have one follow-up question. Um, and I understand going off of Supervisor, going off of Supervisor Lopez's um uh, suggestion of seventy-five percent, because you're not gonna really get any deputies in there probably till first quarter's over with. Um, on the compliance division, how soon will that be set up?
Supervisor, it's already going. We're just absorbing the costs elsewhere and the sergeant and the commander will be that for the permanent position will be in July, August as part of the ongoing recruitment that we're filling right now.
Okay, thank you. That was my only question.
Is that something you're supportive of then? The creation of the compliance division?
Yes, I am.
And I am as well. Or I'm just wondering if we have three.
When you say creation of, are you talking about the sheriff, the commander and the?
Yes.
Yes. I support that as well.
Right, so was I. The two positions, right?
Super, okay, that's wonderful. And then with the the body cameras, I can't recall how we worked that out. It sounded like we were a yes in the hopes that we would be able to use the one thirty-six for the staffing and the grant would cover all of the equipment for the three hundred uh cars. And I just wanted to know, I I'm supportive of that. I don't know where everybody else stands on that though.
I, I, that's, sorry. Um, that was for the disc position that you're speaking of?
Yeah.
Um, so I guess, like, it sounds like, yes, we will need someone in that role, but we don't have the grant yet. Um, and nor do we have the uh, the equipment yet. So I'm not sure that we fund that starting off now, but I, I, you know, I think one of the reasons why I do think we, and I made, you know, some points yesterday that we should be thinking thoughtfully and reserving some strategic uh, some of our contingency funds. Because I think there are things like this that are gonna come up over the course of the year that we will be, you know, needing to provide support for uh, to fulfill the grant obligations. Um, I, I haven't, I haven't heard that the need for that starts uh on Ju- July first, but I, you know, could be wrong. Um, and I, you know, I think, I think my indication is that I'm definitely supportive of pursuing um body cameras so that we can ensure the safety of our deputies and we have the evidence available uh for for everyone's safety. Um, but I, I think that that there's more to come on that conversation. Uh, so I look forward to being open to having that come back to us when the time comes. Um, going back to the, the question about the, 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 the five additional unfunded deputies. So we currently have forty-five vacancies um in the sheriff's office. What I'm hearing is that we could have eight deputies ready to start uh soon with another twelve uh coming in potentially in August. That still leaves us with a significant number of vacant funded positions. So I'm just questioning my colleagues on, if we were to fund an additional five, knowing that that those will, we already have twenty, over twenty that would be uh vacant already into um after the first quarter. I guess I'd, I'd just love to hear more of your thoughts on that.
If I should have them.
Well, you mentioned the forty. We only have twenty um current sworn staff vacancies. I know it says twenty-five. That was when it was created. We hired many, we've hired a number this month. So we're at twenty sworn staff, um, twenty-four, and then with the five unfunded, we're at twenty-five uh when you add those in. We only have of those twenty, it's thirteen deputies roughly. Um, I'd have to look at the specific chart, but it's thirteen. Our August academy, it's gonna absorb all thirteen. That's our, we're looking at twelve to fifteen right now. We won't have any vacancies.
Okay, so you'll be able to fully fill your vacancies by August. Okay, thank you for clarifying that point. That wasn't clear for for me when I was reading this. Okay, then.
Okay.
And if I could Supervisor Askew on that point, just one critical thing that I remember from past years is it it is a recruitment, uh, it puts you at a disadvantage if you're having to tell the recruit that you're gonna come back and ask the board for the position. Right? And saying that the money is there now and we can start you in the process, that's a lot more attractive to somebody that's looking to join our agency. And I know that that was a place that folks were hindered in the past. And so that was the concept with the seventy-five percent, putting the money out there so that there is that ability out of the gate to tell the person, we have the position and it's funded and we're good to go, rather than saying, we got to go back to the board to ask for support in the future. Yeah, just wanted to put that out there.
So I see that we saw the support for the five deputy correctional officers at seventy-five percent for the five positions and then the sergeant and then the commander. The commander, there is nine funded positions for commanders currently in the department, and then there was three unfunded because at one point there was eleven commanders in the sheriff's department.
There, several years ago, there were eleven. It shrunk to nine. We're currently operating with six filled positions, three vacancies. And we have one off on leave, so we're really running with five.
Thank you for that clarification. And so we have the agreement on the sergeant, commander, five deputy correctional officers.
And then we're now looking at the body cam person. And it sounds like they would not be needed until September when we hear about the grant. Is that correct? So perhaps if we were at seventy-five percent for that as well, knowing that they would be able to, you know, take a little bit of time to get them on. I don't know if I've got, if there are three people voting yes on that or not.
Either that or we could bring this back at that time when the grant is awarded.
Bringing it back?
Bringing it back.
Yeah, I would support bringing it back once we hear on the grant.
Bring it back.
Yeah, I just want to ensure that when I do come back to you with that ask, that you don't get mad at me in my office by saying, we didn't know this was going to happen.
Now, this is, this is direction by our board. If we, agreement that we're asking you to bring it back when the award is granted. And then obviously, when the award is granted, it takes some time to ramp up the program and implement the technology.
And then finally, I think it was fifty percent for the records director to help with the Hernandez compliance essentially. That was the new position. And I think so it was fifty percent being that they would start in January. And that was the records director.
I don't see any, I think that's, I don't.
Am I a lone voice?
Yeah, I think so. I think, you know, considering the tight budget, I think I think the board has expressed where it wants to go.
I guess my final comment on that is that I feel like we, that we, the people, the people brought somebody on in this position as sheriff of our county because we needed change drastically. And I just don't want to see her and her team's hands, you know, cuffed so that they aren't able to do all of the things that our people, the voters in Monterey County voted for. So that's my final comment on the staffing.
Okay.
Supervisor, real quick, and I know that we have a packed audience here. And I know that many of them are actually here in support of the sheriff's office. But I can tell you, we've been talking to a lot of different groups that are your constituents, and they are supportive of the sheriff's office of making the change. And change isn't free in our business, and we do need your support to do that.
Great. Just under the comment, just under the comment of understanding the whole process we're going through, I'm assuming when we're done here, we're going to be reviewing probably everything that we have said that we're going to approve. And maybe when we look and see where we're at in contingency, I'll have an open mind on this records position, just depending on where we're at at that point. But I don't want to state anything at this, at this point because of the tight financial needs.
We have a lot of requests, for sure. Okay, if there's no other comments, then we'll conclude the presentation on the sheriff's department. Thank you very much for coming today. We got some smaller agendas to go through, and then we'll come back for the deliberations on items on the table. We're going to revisit the regular board of supervisors meeting. We're going to call the Beronda County Sanitation District. Madam Clerk, you call the role for the record?
Yes, good morning. Let the record reflect.
Real quick, I do have a procedural question, sorry. Are you guys going to be taking public comment at all today, sir?
No, it was just yesterday.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
So all the people leaving, I just want to point this out. They were all here for public comment to support the sheriff's office. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Good morning. Let the record reflect. All directors are present, with Director Lopez appearing via video conference.
Okay, any additions or corrections to this agenda?
There are none.
Any general public comments for items not on this Beronda County Sanitation District agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to consent calendar. There's only one item regarding the public works facilities parks, Beronda County Sanitation District. Any comments on this? Seeing none. Is there a motion in a second? Moved by Church. Second by Lopez. Comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Roll call, Mr. Kirk, sorry.
Oh, roll call. Sorry about that.
Aye.
Supervisor Lopez?
Aye.
Supervisor Root Askew?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Leaho?
Aye, motion carries five zero. We will adjourn the Beronda County Sanitation District. We'll go to the East Garrison Community Services District. Madam Clerk, you call the role for the record?
Yes, good morning. Let the record reflect. All directors are present, with Director Lopez appearing via video conference.
Any additions or corrections to this agenda?
There are none.
Is there any general public comments for items not on this East Garrison Community Services District agenda? Seeing none. We got also one consent calendar item, item number one, East Garrison Community Service District. Do, I need a motion in a second. Moved by Askew, second by Adams. Any public comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those, let me roll call Madam Clerk.
Yes, Supervisor Church?
Aye.
Supervisor Lopez?
Aye.
Supervisor Root Askew?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Leaho?
Aye, we will adjourn the East Garrison Community Services District. Now we will be in the East Garrison Public Financing Authority. Madam Clerk, if you could call the role?
Good morning. Let the record reflect. All directors are present, with Director Lopez appearing via video conference.
Any additions or corrections to this agenda?
There are none.
Is there any general public comments for items not on this public financing authority agenda? Seeing none. Consent item, item number one, we have a, do we have a motion in a second? Moved by Askew, second by Adams. Madam Clerk, you call, let me ask for, is there any public comments on the motion and item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the role.
Supervisor Church?
Aye.
Supervisor Lopez?
Aye.
Supervisor Root Askew?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Leaho?
Aye. We'll adjourn that meeting and we'll go to the Paharo County Sanitation District. Madam Clerk, call the role.
Yes, good morning. Let the record reflect. All directors are present, with Director Lopez appearing via video conference.
Is there any public comments for item not, any corrections or additions?
There are none.
Any general public comments for items not on today's agenda for the Paharo County Sanitation District? Seeing none. We have one consent item, item number one, if we could have a motion in a second.
So moved.
Moved by Adams, second by Church. Any public comments on this item? Seeing none. All those, Madam Clerk, for call the role.
Supervisor Church?
Aye.
Supervisor Lopez?
Aye.
Supervisor Root Askew?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Leaho?
Aye, we'll adjourn that meeting and we'll call to order the successor agency of the redevelopment agency of the county of Monterey. Madam Clerk, call the role.
Good morning. Let the record reflect. All directors are present, with Director Lopez appearing via video conference.
Any additions or corrections?
There are none.
Any public comments for items not on the redevelopment agency of the county of Monterey, successor agency of the redevelopment agency agenda? Seeing no comments. So we have one public, one consent calendar item. If we could have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Moved by Church, second by Adams. Any public comments on this item? Seeing none. I'll call the role.
Director Church?
Aye.
Director Lopez?
Aye.
Director Root Askew?
Aye.
Director Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Director Leaho?
Aye, motion carries unanimously. We'll adjourn that agenda, that meeting, and we'll call to order the successor housing agency to the redevelopment agency of the county of Monterey. Madam Clerk, call the role.
Good morning. Let the record reflect. All directors are present, with Director Lopez appearing via video conference.
Any additions or corrections?
There are none.
Okay, any public comments for items not on this agenda? I don't see any, so we have a consent calendar item as well. If we have a motion in a second? Moved by Church, second by Adams. Madam Clerk, call the role.
Director Church? Director Lopez?
Aye.
Director Root Askew? Director Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Director Leaho?
Aye, motion carries unanimously. We'll adjourn that meeting, and that was all our other items on, so we could, we'll adjourn that meeting and then we'll bring it back and reconvene the board of supervisors meeting. And waiting for a CAO. But maybe we want to have our Mr. Vega come forward and, because I think this is where hard work, where we go through all the items that we have to make decisions on.
So I know that we went through all the different agenda items yesterday, the ones that were not presented. You already went through those and provided direction. We also went through some of them that were presented. And I didn't hear specific feedback as to some of those items to be approved. So you would like to go back on those first that were presented, or do you want to just go through the list of the, all the pending augmentations that is in front of you? How would you like to handle this? Just go through that list? It just go back through the agenda on those that were presented and see if there is anything there that you would like to be reconsidered? It'll be easy on the list, okay? Sounds good.
Yeah, I think that's the same one here. This one's the large one. Yeah, mine was small print, but.
Before we begin, and I did have one correction on the small list that we were shared this morning. I think just, I think we were, the majority I heard was very clear that the cannabis reduction is money that we don't expect to spend. So the way that this is calculated, it's taking that as a negative towards the contingency, adding money to what we have available.
That's not the intent supervisor. So it is just the way that is represented to summarize all the changes that we have. But it will not be in any way affecting contingencies or any other funding source. So what we will do with the cannabis is that we're going to have to reduce the revenue and we're going to have to reduce the expenditure on the budget by one point four million dollars as indicated, as approved by the board.
Okay, so on this, on the grand total column, it appears it's calculating it as though it's a negative. And so our actual, if you look at what we've summarized to the budget, it's actually four point two million, not the two point eight million that we have already. Is that?
I understand what you're saying. I think that the interpretation of that chart is not that it's going to be used for contingency. Just look at each column separately, and I'll remove the grand total to the right, so that it's not confusing to all of you. But it is not intended to mix funding sources. So cannabis is in its separate column, contingency separate column, so you go each column separately. The total to the right, it just tells you all the changes that will happen to the budget.
I got it. I see where you're talking about. The contingency number is actually three point two. Got it. Thank you.
All right, so now that we have clarified that, so let's see, maybe I could share that beautiful document in front. And see, we could move forward.
Yeah, because each of these departments had some augmentations and then then, then in the presentations, they made requests for additional, some, not all, but some had outside of their augmentations. And so it's not as clear for every department where the budget office and the CAO's office actually gave some of the requests to some of these departments. And nonetheless, when they presented, they still made the ask for the other positions they were.
Correct. So some of those items I highlighted in green that were not originally on the augmentation list. So the process for the county, just to clarify where we are, the county looks over all of the available resources, compare that to the overall projected expenditures for the next fiscal year. And it's actually the departments that provide those priorities. So anything that is a priority for the departments, they put as part of the baseline. That is not something that our office or anybody takes to them. So that was just a clarification from some department saying that they don't understand how some of these things were not in the baseline. It is because they actually didn't prioritize those over other things that are important in the budget. So I think that why you just want to make sure that that's very clear. The baseline budgets is what the departments prioritize over everything else once they look at the available resources. So that's just.
And some of that, in some of these departments, I think they, they put items that make, they put that out there in that way, knowing that it's going to be one of those obvious things that we have to fund in order to preserve the things they wanted to keep within their budget. So I think strategically, always a department call to put, kind of put us in that position, so.
So I think that as we look forward for next fiscal year, not trying to derail the process here, we have to be more cautious about the departments and working with our office because it is going to be hard. And whatever is on, makes it to that list of augmentation, most likely is going to be cut because there's not going to be funding available. So that's just a caution. So now let's go and look at the list. I had to make it a little smaller because so I could see it only on one small screen here. But we could start looking at the Assessor County Clerk Recorder. And from, they had several vacant positions. They had some that were funded already as part of the recommended budget. And these ones are the ones that did not make it, but I didn't hear any specific support from the majority of the board to fund those. So I think that.
And this was one of those departments that had sixty-one positions, the, they were augmented four. And so the Assessor County Clerk Recorder was advocating for the four additional positions.
Correct.
But they did get four.
Correct. They did get four as part of the recommended.
Above what they had staffed this year.
Correct. So that's what I heard. Unless I hear any other comments, I'm moving to the next department.
Yes.
Just to clarify, so for the positions that are listed, this is listed at a, starting at a certain part of the year, not for the full funding for the entire year, right? We did it at a starting like twelve weeks in or something like that?
Not on this list. On this list, this is the full amount. So if the board decided to fund some of these positions, then what we will do is work with the department and saying, what are your realistic plans of hiring someone really in July first?
Okay.
And a lot of times we modify the funding request based on that. So today, we try to do use the amounts based on what is here, but we still do some additional work between now and the adopted budget. And those numbers could be a little lower if we could work with those departments.
So similar to what we did with this, what board decided on the seventy-five percent? That would be the amount on here may, if you choose to move forward, would be a percentage of that again?
Yes, and we could do that either now, or we could just negotiate with the departments separately, and then we bring that on the adopted budget for you. And you'll have that information because a lot of times, the department will say, you know, it's not realistic that I'll hire all these positions in July. And then we only provide them ten months of funding or nine or so on and so forth.
Can I ask a big picture question? Where do we stand essentially? What do we have? What is being requested? And what is the difference? Is that the figure? Thirty-two million, eight hundred seventy-seven is being requested?
Correct. That's the bottom line there, but this is where we stand right now. We have four point five million dollars as what, based on the feedback that was provided to the sheriff's department use recently. Four point five million dollars out of contingencies are being used. Out of that, we had a balance, we had an initial balance of seven point nine million, so we have three point four million dollars available. So that is a smaller piece of paper that was distributed to you earlier. You had a bigger one and a smaller one, and the smaller one gives you the summary. But as of this morning, we, obviously the information about the sheriff's department wasn't there. So now that the sheriff's department positions have been added, we have a leftover balance of three point four million dollars in contingencies.
Three point four million is what we have in contingency.
As we have, we have left over after all the decisions that so far have been made.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. And then again, forgive me for this, but what, what would be adding to contingencies through the year? Is this, I mean, will there be monies that will be generated that will be fed into our contingency budget?
Not unless the board of supervisors decides to do that. Right now, currently under the board policy, only one percent of the total general fund revenue is the dollar amount that is set aside for contingencies. So that represents seven point nine million dollars for this fiscal year. So if the board decided to put more fund, more funding aside into contingencies, they could say you would not want to bump that up bump that up to one point five, two percent, whatever the board decides to do into the future. But right now, there are no resources available to be able to do that. So if you needed to do that, then we'll have to identify the resources to bump that up.
Great. So the difference between the four point nine that we quote unquote need and the three point four that has been requested? That's sort of like the number that we need to be looking for.
So right now, you have allocated four point five out of seven point nine?
And we're not even through this entire list yet, you know? So we could easily eat through all this. And that's, that's where I was always concerned every year because our process always is one that tells directors, what do you want? And then we get the long wish list. And then out of ten asks to get one or two, but then at the end of the process, at the end of the list, they add into a hundred new positions, and we're doing the same thing we've done for the prior two years, adding a lot more positions that in the end are very expensive because they are ongoing once we hire staff. You know, they're not one-time expenses. And we're at a really high number. What was the total? Four point five? Five million where we're at already. We're left with three point four contingencies, and we still have this long list to go through.
So I've just been wondering if, if we've ever looked at is all of the things that have been added, we all sat here and said we believe are important, you know, and that's how they got on the list. What if we just went through and sliced everybody by, say, two percent? Would that get us to where we need?
I I'm not sure. It depends on where you want to be, but we're not there yet because we haven't actually looked at everything yet. I haven't heard from feedback from. So what we're trying to get at is listen about everything else that is spending and you're gonna say, yeah, these are not priorities at this point. And then look at the priorities at that point, and then at that point you could either remove from that list or add. But I think let's get through the list first.
Yeah, and and once we see that, that we have very little left, we have to make tougher decisions and stop saying yes to everything. We're gonna have to make these calls now, because it is, every additional position is gonna eat up into those remaining three point four million dollars.
I'm not sure. You could see on the screen, hopefully, uh these numbers, uh where we are right now. These are the things that you have said yes to on the changes. And as I said, we're at four point five million dollars for contingency. So I'll go back to the other list that is a little harder to read, but uh we have to go through it. It's very long. Let's go, let's go back to that.
Yeah, we're going back down by the departments on on their requests. So we're on audit to controllers.
The auto controller, they're requesting new positions. Uh that's what they are requesting.
But I, I, okay, yeah.
Yeah, and we are, I didn't see any support for that. The auto controller already got some new positions as part of the E R P project. This is completely different from these other new positions.
Yeah, that was twelve positions for the E R P.
Correct.
Slash Oracle.
Correct. And I think now, if there is not anything about the auto controller, I don't see any feedback. So I'll move on to the civil rights office and we, they have requested the L G B T commission amount. And then the amount related to the uh translation, the department understands that that is not something that is gonna be recommended for funding. They could work with departments to actually provide the funding as that need arises.
Yeah.
So but the L G B T Q commission was a natural referral.
That's a requirement. Um we'll go to Supervisor Lopez.
Yeah, so today being the first day of Pride Month, I think it's appropriate and I'd love to see if there's support from my colleagues to fund this position. At the seventy five thousand dollars requested, I think it's appropriate, given the need that's been expressed by our um workforce, our staff. And our team after doing all the work to get back to us about the best form to move forward. And I'd love to see this program get off the ground and really help break some ground.
I have, I have no opposition for to the commission, but I I don't know, because this was a staffing position. I don't know if staffing position, if, you know, cause I I know like we're. Civil Rights does our equal opportunity commission, only meet once a quarter, basically, four meetings a year. Um I don't, I don't know if that that merits um. An entire position uh to to do that or whether that could be absorbed by that office. But I'm not gonna say no to this either.
Yeah, and I think that it just, if we get a majority of at least three, this is something that we will add. I just will caution you, this uh part time position, and we're gonna have hard times.
Yeah.
And we're uh, do you want to put that person in that, that position where you're gonna hire someone?
Right.
And then most likely, you're gonna have to let, look at letting someone go.
Right.
Later on. So it's just difficult. It is a difficult position to be at. It is important services, but it's also a difficult position to, for you to be in.
Um Supervisor Adams, Supervisor Askew?
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I.
Or reverse.
Let me continue this conversation. I'm just gonna reiterate, I have significant serious concerns about fully spending down our contingency before we start the year. We don't have cannabis money available to us. We don't have ARPA money available to us. Um I think that as we continue down this list. We're gonna have to think about anything we add now, we're setting ourselves up for for cuts uh and layoffs uh in future years. And um Chris, I appreciate you bringing this forward. I support our L G B T Q um community. I think that uh it was a laudable, um uh it it is something that I would love to see our county do more work and engage in. But at this point, I'm, I'm not able to support adding an additional position that's gonna be the first on the list for layoffs. Uh and 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 just a matter of months ahead of us. Uh so I I think um what I would love to be able to see. Is a uh in the future years, is a, is a community, um uh we have all of our community asks that come forward. I would love to see a process that allows for groups like our pride organizations to be a part of that ask process. Where we have a set aside amount of money that's very clear with a clear process, where we can then engage in supporting some of the nonprofits like Epicenter. Um or Pride Salinas Valley, or Monterey County Pride, Monterey Peninsula Pride, where we can be supportive of the things that our values align with. But at this point, I'm, I would, I would feel like we're setting someone up for failure if we created an additional position for this right now.
And and that's, that uh that's been my own ongoing concern. I always say, when we hire new positions, if next year is as tough as we think it's gonna be. Though they are gonna be on the, on the chopping block. And if they give up another job to take this position and then they're cut, that's unfair to that employee. And um and so I I've been saying that repeatedly over the last two, three years and, but next year, it looks like that's gonna be very real. We might be facing a list of layoffs and and I I don't wanna impact people's livelihoods and their ability to uh pay their bills and provide for their families. Um by um having them leave a job to take it and only to be um put on the chopping block. So um. Any other, I don't see any other comments on this. Um. And I think we, we need to have a conversation with the Civil Rights Office, whether they could manage the commission, but manage it in a timely way. Where it's not gonna absorb so much time, right? Um if they meet quarterly, you know, or or once every two months. And if there's additional demand, they could come, I think, come to the board, um letting us know if it's not manageable.
Yes, and and as as part of this, we hear uh from board members comments like the one that you just made right now. We also have a piece of paper that is a follow up by departments. So we will have a long list of things that say, okay, this is a follow up for department, come back to the board and talk about this later. So this is something that definitely could be revisited and we will have that list of follow ups and we, we will bring that to you when the budget is uh is uh is adopted.
Okay, let's, let's do that then. Um let's go to the clerk of the board. I think that was just uh voted on already. Okay, so we don't have to go through that again. County Administrative Office, the the green positions, we went through those.
Uh just technically, we, National Center for Public Land, um Lands only has two um members supporting.
I I I think, I think.
I brought that forward.
We all, I think we all, we had a majority yesterday.
I think that was a clerical error, because it is a yes right now, but I miss actually Supervisor Askew, she was supporting it, so.
Yeah.
Yes. Sorry for that.
Okay.
So Chamber, I was, yeah, Chamber of Commerce has been discussed. Also, uh can the cannabis reduction only to revisit that? And then we have some new positions, the management analyst for contracts purchasing, and you have the long list. So I'm not gonna read all of them. Unless you have a specific interest from any of the members of the D I S.
Yeah, we'll let our C A O make a comment on these requests.
Of these items that we have here, the operating budget for homelessness is probably one that we would wanna support. I believe it's probably the mitigation program. Um Nick Chulas could probably clarify that. It doesn't have to be at that a hundred thousand. I think she'd mentioned, I think the existing is at fifty. Uh but this is what allows her then to go out and be able to assist our local agencies. So really just giving her that flexibility and she's winding down this year's um this month. So um it'd be great if she still had that support.
The homeless encampment mitigation program.
And that would need to come from contingencies. We don't have any of the other homeless specific resources available.
Correct. This allows for that flexibility to be able to address other items that would not be covered with dollars that are coming to social services. That have strings attached.
Okay.
This gives you that flexibility that if there's something direct that you want done within a certain district, you'd be able to address it.
So yeah, so if I made, so maybe we could come back to this one, because I recall that I think that we already funded some portion of it for operational budget for homelessness.
Yeah, uh Mr. Chairman, if I could clarify, I believe these equals correct. There isn't, I believe it's fifty thousand dollars in the recommended budget as an operating budget. For the homeless services director. This is a separate from that. As the C A O indicated, this is to address specific. Encampment mitigation issues, of which there are numerous. We we respond to many, uh you know, encampment related issues. We deal with other jurisdictions often on a joint basis and there needs to be some funding available to cover expenses that are over and above the operating budget. That's what this a hundred thousand is requested for.
So you, you're asking for the full hundred or at least fifty thousand?
At least fifty thousand would be helpful. I mean, it's, probably she could use the whole hundred. Um but.
I think fifty thousand and if we need to have more because of some additional incidents, I think she, and she needs to come to the board and at that point use contingencies, yeah.
I would support it at a hundred only because I know we have an ask that came in last week as well from the city of King on an encampment issue that we've been in partnership with. And so knowing that there's already an ask out there for thirty five, I I would be comfortable supporting this at a hundred, knowing that that can be supported out of this bucket.
Okay, uh Supervisor Askew?
Just to clarify, this isn't for um, when we say encampments, we're not saying sweeps. This is not funding that would go towards uh like the environmental services that go in and do the sweeps.
No, no. This is um strictly services that um it could include motel vouchers. It could include things like that. Some, giving her that flexibility to still be able to help the outreach team. What uh City of King is actually requesting is exactly that. It would be in the form of support to provide for housing for individuals temporarily while they're being assessed and um. Potentially turned over to agencies that could provide further assistance.
Okay, I can support the hundred thousand as well.
Um Supervisor Adams.
Thank you. Does this include the um team that goes out or is that coming from a separate bucket?
That's a separate bucket. This is specifically dollars that Roxanne would have access to.
Got it. Thank you.
And King City has had ongoing issues on that river with families and children living there, so I know that hasn't been easy. Um okay, I'm supportive of a hundred as well. Thank you, um C A O for that. Um I don't see any other discussion on other items here, so um. Are we going down to emergency management?
Yes, let's move on to emergency management. And those items uh that you see in green were not originally requested. Those were new, that were requests that were made during the budget hearing yesterday. And you see some that are not in green. Those are ones that had been considered before.
Uh and Mr. Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm, uh this is Nick Chulas. I'm, I'm pinch hitting for um Kelsey Scanlon, who is not available this morning.
Okay, she's on a plane.
Yeah, the two items on this list that are particularly critical, very critical, the management analyst two. This is a position, as she indicated yesterday, that would manage the homeland security grant process, which is uh about a five hundred thousand dollar a year grant. It's complicated. It involves um emergency response, first responder and public safety related equipment and and services. Uh it's complicated and and needs um a strong management. We've had problems in the department. Prior to it becoming a department, with it being understaffed and under resourced in terms of the ability to manage that program. And I think she made the the point yesterday that this position also would handle general contract management uh for D E M. The other item that I know she's particularly concerned about is the, it's a small amount. It's an additional sixty thousand dollars. But to bring up uh about a hundred thou, a hundred and ten thousand dollars to have available for the after action report. Which is gonna be really critical in the Paharo uh winter storm situation. So those two items, I I've spoken with her. She's unavailable, but she's very concerned. That the board uh fund those items hopefully. Thank you.
Okay, uh we'll go to Supervisor Adams and Supervisor Church.
Thank you. So I wanna be sure I've got this down then, Nick. So it's sixty for the after action report. And then what about the website development?
That's, that's important, but I think she feels that she can work that out.
Okay.
If, if knowing that money is limited, the two things are, they're very concerning to her is the additional sixty thousand for the after action report. And the hundred and sixty two, almost hundred and sixty three thousand for the management analyst two position.
Okay, thank you for explaining.
Okay, Supervisor Church?
Yeah, I I'm not sure. I may not have been clear uh yesterday, but um I do support the sixty thousand on here. I think um it's, it's important to know where we've been at on here. I'm, I'm sort of at a position, looking at this, as our, our contingent is going down. It's annoying. We're gonna run into some tough times. I, I, I'm kind of at, at a hard stop here on, on, on new positions. But on some of these one time expenses uh that we're just facing this, this fiscal year, I can support and I see this as one of those.
Supervisor Adams.
Do we have the option of using ARPA funding for some of these one time?
Well, all that funding has been allocated. So it will be an option unless we take it away from something else that has already been allocated.
Okay.
Or potentially, we could also look at how much is gonna be in savings by November. We will know how much we will have in savings in, from fiscal year twenty two, twenty three. And then at that time, you could add, actually allocate some of that funding for this purpose. So if right now you allocate continuous for some of these expenses. But we do have ARPA funding, we could use that at that point to backfill it and replenish the contingencies.
Are we gonna be going through this whole process all over again when we find out the amount that that is?
Um no, I'm not sure about this process in particular for the entire uh county, but we will bring you with a plan from the C A O's office as to how this could potentially be used. And I'm not sure how much it's gonna be. Could be a dollar, it could be a couple million. I I don't know.
Thank you.
All right, um Supervisor Askew on these two items, action, uh after action and the management analyst.
I think they're both critically important. Um and I'm just not sure again how we add additional ongoing positions at this point. Um I. If our C A O tells us that this is what we need to do, I'm gonna say okay, but I'm, I'm like, I.
So do I hear from you about the after action report? Does it yes? Is that what you mean? Or not, are the position, the position or no?
So the after action report is a one time, and that is to do the work related to the Paharo incident. She already has fifty. She needs that other sixty to be able to complete. Um as to the position itself, this is related to grants that she does receive. Unfortunately, this grant specifically, the five hundred thousand, has had audit findings in the past. So she's trying to address some of those challenges that were related to that. I think eventually what her plan is to actually be able to apply for grants that include revenue um sources coming in. And so that would add a little bit more of a cushion for her. Um right now, she does have a recovery position that's been added. Where it's gonna be funds that, from FEMA that would cover that position. So I think there's, as she builds her team, she'll be able to actually resource, reach out to resources that'll be coming in. My hope is that if we do have this management analyst position, that she'll be able to find other resources to then back. Um so in the event that we do have to face cuts, she'll have um other revenue that could potentially be used to support that position. Going forward. But she's, she's trying to correct some of the issues that are related to the grant reporting.
Supervisor Askew, anything else?
Um so I'm gonna put this, so I, I, I think that what we've seen with emergency management, we do, we do need. We do need to like have a robust department there. Um and I know that as we created the department, we were thinking like we didn't want to have any more costs associated. I think the realities that we're seeing just this year um have given me second thoughts on that. Given that we've spent a lot of like significant amounts of money on things that I uh don't know that we should be prioritizing. Um I would prioritize this over those other things, but if we're gonna leave those other things on the list, I don't know how we do it all. So I'm, I'm supportive of this, but only if we're able to find savings.
Cause we're taking tallies of votes here.
Yeah, I mean, we're taking tallies, but at some point we have to come back. I I don't wanna.
After action report, management analyst.
Yeah, the after action report, yes, cause it's a one time. And um I would like to find us a way to fund the management analyst. But not if it means we expend our contingencies all the way down.
Okay, can we go to Supervisor? Supervisor Lopez, and then we'll come back to Supervisor Adams.
I'm good with the uh after action report.
Okay, Supervisor Adams.
Could we reduce the amount for the manag- management analyst? Rather than have it be one sixty two, have it be one fifty?
It's a position. It's a salary schedule.
She could, she could potentially hire later in the year. I mean, she's, she is gonna need um that added support. So if you wanna do a percentage, maybe instead of one sixty, do seventy five percent like you've done with others.
I I would suggest that we do that. But I'm supportive of the after action report.
Uh a- as am I. Um also here, and and just to put some perspective, when we made this a department, I raised concerns. Cause I knew it was gonna, what was gonna happen. Um and sure enough, the following year, then the the director position was up in salary. A new position, I think it was assistant, clerical position was added. And now we're having to add another management analyst. So that I I just know that what normally happens when you create departments, the the asks keep coming and and the the costs and staffing grow. Uh yes, go ahead.
Uh we recently hired the finance manager in that department. Um so maybe what would be helpful is finding out what the finance management. How the role of that manager would be in terms of the grant. So even if you tentatively maybe wanna consider fifty percent for that position. And then if it's not something that ends up being needed by the department, at that point, you know, that means you can't hire until January. Unless you want us to revisit, similar to the sheriff sometime in um October, November, um and confirm whether or not that's still a need for the department.
But but the concern there is that you do fifty percent, but next year it's a hundred percent. And um eh at a time when we're gonna be facing potential layoffs. That's, that's concern for that person. Uh similar with, with um upending their, their careers, um if they're, they're put on the, the shortlist for layoffs. Supervisor Adams.
Thank you. But you know, again, looking at, at that department, yes, you know, she is building um. Her team. I mean, think of the work that they did this past year alone. Uh it it was incredible. Um and that was just twenty four seven. And that was just 24/7, for days and days, and weeks and weeks, months and months. I, I don't want to cut her off. I, I feel like she has the opportunity to build. She's interested. She's got the energy to do it. So I, I'll go with Sonia's suggestion that we do it at 50% so that she could, if we find that, you know, she's doing great with the new position that she's already filled, fine. If not, she can fill this position beginning in January.
I don't see any other support for 50% at this time. So I see support. Everybody was unanimous on the after-action report. Maybe we could come back to this item. We'll put, leave it on the table and look at it at the end when we tally everything up, okay? Because, because I, I agree.
Be on this one.
I, I agree with, Kelsey is, is a great leader and she's doing great work. And she, she was heroic during the storms and I want to support her, but, but I, I know what's going to happen next year. And I, I think that's, we have to, this is a point we're going to make some tough calls here.
Maybe next year she'll be so great with the grants because of her new staff person, she won't need it.
All right, let's, okay, we'll table that. That item would just come back. If you keep moving through, we're at the district attorney's office.
Yeah, the district attorney, they've received that request, so we're good.
Okay.
Can I make two corrections on, before we leave this page? On the Sherman Hart House, I was yes on that. And then the road cap, road fund cap, there's a dollar amount there. But I think what that was, was direction to, just wanted to clarify that we were all on the same page. That was direction to change, to, to hold firm to our financial policies for the development of next year's budget. With the road.
24%.
Was that the clear direction that?
I'm not sure if I heard from three of you about that, but if I hear from three of you, we'll make sure that that happens for next fiscal year.
I, I believe that's what we discussed because that was my, my support for the DSA is contingent on this, putting that, that road fund back. And I know that's going to be another real hard call here next year, but...
If I see three of you for that, say, was it two, three?
I thought we did, and I thought...
Yeah, I'm a third on that.
All right, so we will, we will look at that for next fiscal year. So we will make that as one of the follow-ups. It's not going to be reflected here as a dollar amount, but it's going to be one of the follow-ups.
25% TOT.
Okay, just wanted to...
We'll have to make a tough call next year.
It's going to be tough next year, so yes.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be more difficult than I, I believe we might look at that differently as well.
Yep. Okay, and then you got the Sherman Hart House.
Yes, I'll have my staff correct that. While I'm doing this, this is hard, but yes.
This is helpful. This is helpful to have it laid out like this so we can make sure that what we are being heard is accurate. Thank you.
Oh yeah, that's what we're trying to do. So that's how we try to keep it together. So thank you for that.
Thank you. And with that in mind as well, regarding the Community Association of Big Sur, it only shows two votes, but I know that there was a third, and I believe that it was...
Yeah, I think it was Lopez. Yeah.
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 Alejo, yeah.
I corrected that. Thank you. Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, so that was the county administrative office and the district attorney. And now we're going back to the health department.
Yep.
So for the health department, this is what is on the table right now. And I did hear consensus about the health department for the early childhood programs. Up to 450,000, they had three different augmentations altogether. But the consensus was saying 450,000, and then the department will work with the first five as to what, how those 450,000 will be implemented and what a specific program.
And I just want to be clear, I didn't get a chance to comment on that, but I'm, I'm extremely supportive, obviously, of that initiative.
So it's a total of 450.
Okay, yes, yes.
So you got Lopez, Askew, Alejo, Adams. And then there was an issue of the cannabis education. What was, I know there was a discussion between Elsa Medina and the CAO on that.
Yes, so if, if we can just go back to one though, I think we missed the mobile clinics.
Yeah, we're on all the items, but if we get on the cannabis.
On cannabis, Director did withdraw the environmental health positions from the cannabis funding, but still wanted to pursue the educational component for cannabis. This could potentially be cannabis-funded. And her original request was actually decreased to 150 because she has other resources that she would use. So for your board's consideration, is really that 150 potentially coming out of cannabis.
Okay, we had Askew supportive of that. I'm, I'm supportive. Anyone else?
I'm, I'm supportive of it. I think we heard from the public on that.
Okay, Church, we've got three on that.
I'm, I'm supportive of that as well.
Okay, yeah.
And the spay and neuter as well, that I know CAO was going to bring up next.
Okay, yeah. We, we got, wanted to get through that. Go back to the, the mobile clinics, spay and neuter, 240,000.
Yeah, I, I'm the only one that's expressed support for that. But you know, this is, you know, we're doing this as a joint partnership with the City of Salinas. The City of Salinas is, from my understanding, moving on to that, if I understood. And I, yeah, you know, I think we have to have a partnership here, at least we're just starting off on this. And I, I think we need to both be stepping forward in some unison here and not have City of Salinas doing some that we're not doing some on. And I, and I do know how significant actually this is in a very vocal group within my community. And this is SNAP, I believe, yes.
And I, I...
Or something similar, yeah.
Well, and I don't know if City of Salinas has yet made the allocation. I think outside indicated there were, they're both making an ask of their staff and then our staff.
Yes, their, their ask is 96,000 while ours is 144.
Exactly.
So I, I don't know if you want to leave it at that 144 or match the ask from the city. It's, she's probably online.
Yes, if I may, thank you. Good morning, Elsa Jimenez with the Health Department. I, I would really want to keep the ask at 144. That'll give us an opportunity to do 60 clinics. You have to remember, this is for the unincorporated Monterey County area, meaning we go very far south, very far north and very far west. I'd really like to keep it at the 144. That would allow us to spay and neuter up to 1,800 animals this coming fiscal year.
So then it would not be 240, it would be 144?
Yes.
Correct. 240 is the total ask for appropriations. 96 with revenue funded by the City of Salinas, presuming that they will approve it. And then 144,000 out of a general fund, county general fund. Thank you.
All right, I'm, I'm supportive of that. Anyone else? Lopez was two? So we got three at least?
I think you have Adams.
And Adams, okay.
Then we have all of you saying yes.
Askew? Yes, okay. Otherwise, they end up in the shelter. We have a lot more animals without this program. They go, they go hand in hand, you know, so.
And we will look at the overall picture at the end of the day. I know that it is difficult what you're doing, so let's just...
Yeah, well, I'll have to.
Yeah, yeah.
So the, the next one?
The, the only other thing on the health one, and we didn't discuss on this, is there was this pilot project on the illegal dumping in litter and the cameras. I was really critical, and I remain critical of the proposal that's been put forward because I just think it's, it, it's just not, it's not workable on the whole survey. I think it could be done, redone that way. I'd be happy to talk to the task force about some ideas I have on there. The cameras are only 8,000, and what's that?
She asked for both. She asked for both the, the part of the pilot is these 120 plus the cameras is eight.
Yeah, but they're two separate items here.
Yeah.
Down here. And I'm just, you know, I, I don't think it has to go hand in hand. I think there's some, a project could go hand in hand with it. If it was refined, I don't know if this is a thing to come back later on, if they can get it done right. I think it's, it is really important issue. But I, I'd be supportive of putting gun in the cameras, which are only 8,000, and see how they go. But I also still support if the board just wants to go that way of having this task force come back with something that's a little more workable than what's been presented.
Well. You don't support it this time. I don't see any other comments on it.
Yeah, only the cameras.
Okay. Just 8,000? Okay, well, let's go to that then. Supervisor Church is supportive. Anyone else? 8,000 for cameras. I don't hear any other comments. Okay, maybe that whole thing just needs to be, come back with the plan then, because they did present that, I think, together, right? Yeah. Okay, no, see another support. Let's go to any other items for, on health.
There is the wellness program also. And in addition to that, there's the employee wellness program, which is the fitness center. That 60,000 request has been modified from the 83,000. And unfortunately, if we do not add the 60,000, this would have to be closed because there's equipment upgrades that must happen, otherwise the, the fitness...
Like what, what equipment? Treadmill? I mean, 60,000 is a lot of money for just exercise.
There's, there's quite a bit. Director Mendoza, can you speak to that as well? Sorry, Director, not Mendoza.
Born in Mendoza, always a Mendoza, I guess. Yes, as I mentioned yesterday during my talking points, currently, we do not have an equipment maintenance or repair agreement. So this is for all the cardiovascular equipment. It is, it is, we have two machines that are currently not functional that we've had to close down. And our concern is that if we don't get the money that we need to be able to set up a maintenance and repair agreement for the, all the equipment in the room, then it'll be deemed unsafe and we'll have to close down the gym. And, and many of your employees, both at Shilling and other places, do take advantage of utilizing the gym, which is free to them and a good benefit that the county provides to its county workers.
So Miss Jimenez or, or Director Jimenez, what do we get for the 60,000? Is it replacing broken equipment or is it getting some kind of repair contract so they could come and service?
Maintenance and repair service agreement, as well as any parts that may need to be replaced on the equipment that we have.
Got it.
Does it seem unfair that there's a, a fitness center there and not one here in this building?
Do you want one here?
I start working out every day. I, I don't know. That sort of bothers me. I also don't know.
Put that in the capital improvements list, you know, for the future.
Why this is in health and not in public facilities?
Facilities, right, yeah.
Well, that's an excellent point. If you do award this money to us, our plan is to have a discussion with our Public Works Parks and Facilities Department to see if the oversight of the equipment could be transferred from the county wellness program run by the Health Department to the facilities group. And then we would just take care of all the programming, the vaccine clinics, et cetera.
And Miss Jimenez, you would, you, the 60 perhaps would not be utilized. All I want to be, they'll set aside so that when you do need repairs, then you could be able to utilize that fund to call in those contractors, right?
Correct.
Okay.
That's just the minimum amount that we would want to have secured for the whole year. Just considering the age of the equipment, et cetera, and just what we're seeing now.
Okay, Supervisor Askew?
Yeah, just a question. When we talk about, I know the wellness program includes some discounted rates that employees have access to at local gyms. And do those discounted rates that we have that are available to all employees come with a price to the county? And if so, what could we get in terms of discounted offers for all county employees? If we were to spend, you know, a comparable amount of money trying to subsidize gym memberships that are available to, to, throughout the county where, where it's most convenient for an employee?
I, I don't know for sure, but I don't think we pay for those reduced county memberships. It is something that is offered as a benefit, but I can, I can get back for you. I mean, obviously, when you think about it, if we were to offer subsidized county gyms for 5,500-plus employees, it would wait, be wait more than 60 grand a year. But I don't believe it costs us anything to get those discounts for the employees.
Yep, okay. Okay, let's go, 60,000, who's supportive? I don't see any... I would say yes, because it's our gym and we got to, even though it's not here, for those employees at the Shilling Center, it's, it's one of those responsibilities. We've got to make those repairs.
It's only a 10-minute drive for you all to go over there and utilize, and it's open 24/7.
Yeah, that's right. Okay.
Did I tell you there's showers?
When the water situation continues to get worse on the peninsula, you may see a change in people's approach to this.
Okay, so there's one vote on this. Don't see any others, Elsa. I think at some point we have to come because we have to upkeep that place. But I don't see, see no other support. I think we need to move on. Okay, we're going to housing and community development.
All right, and this is a request in front of you from that department. And you already approved, for what I understand, the short-term rental provision from that department. So that I got a majority from the board on that. And, but other than that, I didn't see a majority for anything else that was presented yesterday.
A CAO?
There's a, the permit tech, we were able to capture two, Adams and Supervisor Church. But there's, we don't, we didn't have them.
Yeah, just, just following up, I, you know, looking at the contingency, the way it stands right now, I'm, I'm, and knowing that we're running into really tough times next year with positions, I'm going to pull my support for it. I mean, I think this is really important, but I, I just don't know how we're going to fund it going into next year. And I'm just really, really concerned about any, any new positions at this point.
Okay.
Comment?
Yes, Supervisor Adams.
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate your, your comments. I'm, I'm sticking to it. And the reason that I am is that if we don't, if we can't process the permits that people need to build the housing, I mean, even workforce housing, low-cost housing, won't be getting through as quickly as I know we need them to get through. Maybe it's the sort of thing we could come back and revisit when we get further down the road. But I know it was something that they felt strongly about. And, you know, they only had two asks, and one was the short-term mental person, and the other was this one. So I, 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 I think we, if we are going to say no now, I really hope that we can bring it back at a later time and maybe put it in the maybe category.
I, I'd be supportive of that. It's something changed. I'm, I'm really strongly supportive of this. But I, I'm trying to be fiscally responsible and things aren't looking good for next year. That's where I'm standing.
Any other maybes on this one? Not hearing any?
Not even a maybe, okay.
Not even, not even a... Okay, we'll move on. Out of housing, community development.
Human Resources is the next department, and there, there's a position that they had originally requested. The benefits specialist and the department has withdrawn their request. So the only pending one right now is a Qualtrics, Qualtrics agreement and a vacant program manager.
And the Qualtrics agreement is the technology for the surveys needed to make those surveys more usable to departments, as I remember.
So I'm good with the, the management position that I know was requested there under HR.
Okay, HR has talked about the Qualtrics agreement as well. And I think we generally, in theory, have offered support for that so that we can continue to manage employee morale and know where, where issues are, are at before they become issues. But again, I'm, I'm just going to state that, you know, we're spending millions of dollars that I think we would be wise to rethink. And if we could rethink some other items, I'd come back to this one. But at this point, I'm, I'm feeling like we've, we're, we've reached the end of our capacity for spending.
And CEO, you said the HR withdrew the other request?
They withdrew the benefits specialist request. The manager, we discussed previously with the assistant director that was added. Those responsibilities were carried with that assistant director. And this is trying to bring in a program manager to support with labor negotiations. Right now, those labor negotiations are managed through HR by the assistant director.
Okay, so on that one, Lopez is, was supportive of the program manager. I, I'm supportive of that. Anybody else on the program manager?
So where are we at on these, on these two, on the Qualtrics and the program manager?
Qualtrics?
Human Resources.
Yeah, we're talking about both of them. Askew expressed support for the Qualtrics? Or as a maybe, I think she said. Lopez supports the manager position, program manager, and so does, so do I. And I'm, I'm supportive of the Qualtrics agreement as well.
I mean, I'm I I can I can definitely go for the Qualtrics onto there. The program manager, I'd like to put like we're looking at this, the permit technician right now. Because again, I'm just really concerned about what we've approved here on positions. And I just don't know what's going to hold through next year.
Okay, so sort of in. So maybe on the the I see three votes for the Qualtrics. If if Ask You is still on board, or do you want to keep that as a maybe?
I mean, the Qualtrics is also an ongoing agreement. So it's not a position, but it's a it's a contract that once we do the training and bring it up to speed. Is it, you know, are we committing to keeping it on beyond a year? And I'm not sure that that's a position that we're currently in right now.
Okay, do you want to hear from the HR director or no?
I I mean, we can we put this? We've got a couple of them that we're going to circle back to. So can we do our our subtotals and then?
Well, no, it it was a maybe. It was two, two on that Ask You was a maybe. So we could leave that as a maybe to come back to.
I'd like to be able to support both of the the HR manager and the Qualtrics.
And the manager was.
I'm I I think we've probably spent close to what our our max is at this point.
So let's put those on the table as maybes and we'll come back to them at the end.
Could we view the, again, looking at taking fifty percent of the program manager or seventy five percent, bringing it on, you know, later in the year?
Well, we're going to come back to this right now at the end.
All right.
Because our views change once we tally up all the costs. Let's go to a provision.
Provision is a hundred and two thousand. And Chief King actually spoke about that yesterday. He said that they will be able to manage through their budget for that.
Okay, let's go to them, Public Works. Facilities and Parks.
So what I have heard so far is that we were gonna majority for custodial services to continue, also for the security services, the government and center and Shilling, and also for fire fuel abatement program and the Pajaro Soni Mesa, Pajaro Park, that the board had approved previously. So those are the approvals so far that I hear the majority from the board.
And we had also talked about a Parks Master Plan. And I know the support might not be there, but for me, that's critical, given the conversation around that Pajaro Soni Mesa. If long term, we're going to be honest about providing parks to our communities.
And the Parks Master Plan was, again, it was like he gives fifty.
Three fifty, three fifty was the estimate. It's a lot. I get it.
It is a lot.
And it is on the list, but it's just I haven't heard a majority supporting this at this point. Yeah.
Okay, you want to take a vote on the Parks Master Plan funding? Lopez is a yes, anyone else?
I I'm a yes.
I'm a yes as well.
Okay, Adams and Church are yeses.
We have three.
Okay. Anything else on on Public Works, Facilities and Parks? C E O, Del Rosso.
Just to clarify, Sekil, on this one, I see L A T C F is plugged in for the security services and the multi use facilities. Is that also an option for the utilities portion?
Not anymore, it's fully exhausted.
It's exhausted at that point, okay. That would be my only other, if if there was an opportunity to include utilities, maybe for consideration there, because it is at two twenty nine. And it's listed as ongoing, but we the number will fluctuate based on use, right?
Yeah, and it will be ongoing and it will likely grow. You know, the cost of utilities continues to grow. There there's a significant amount that was funded, this is just the remaining amount. I don't recall what it was, but it was like a million or so that was funded already on the recommended budget. And this was left over, not funded. What I think I will suggest is on that and the utilities is to work with the department and identify any potential savings going into next year. We know that we have a lot of infrastructure in place, including some of the charging stations that we have that are currently free. I'm not sure how much we're paying for that. But I have asked the one of my staff to work with the department on getting how much we're paying for that. And then the board will have to decide if the county is going to be able to continue subsidizing the that for electric vehicles going forward. But it's just a decision to be made and information to come later.
Yeah, tip. And and we did already a vote yesterday on the using contingencies for the custodial services. And then the ongoing, the more there's another fund here that that was was split in two, right? So it's a total of nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Correct.
And then that second security service was approved yesterday too, right?
Correct, correct.
That was another five hundred seventy five thousand. And then there's a second tier was that utilities. And utilities is covers what?
This is because of gas and electric for the different buildings. They had a gap in funding.
All these things were things that were put this way and it's.
That's where he's, as Akil is mentioning, that we may want to look at. You know, right now, we don't charge for the use of those plugs for the vehicles. And so he's having staff work with the team. There may be an opportunity to to look that look at that a little further. So if you want to hold on that, we may be able to find an option there and bring it back to your board for consideration.
Okay. So we'll mark that as one of those items to bring back.
So follow up.
Throughout the year, follow up.
Yes.
Follow up on this item. A significant other significant amount. Okay. I think we're done with Public Works, Facilities and Parks. Let's go to the Sheriff.
Yeah, for the Sheriff Department, what we heard this morning, obviously, was they commanded the sergeant, the five F T Es at seventy five percent. And that was what I heard the support for. And also potentially a comment of coming for a fifty percent funding for one of the positions for the director in January potentially. So we could potentially bring this as a follow up also as we do the budget energy report so that you could reevaluate if that's a need still or not. And I think what was a comment from one of the supervisors, only only one of them, yeah.
Yeah, the the follow up was to bring the disc. Once we hear about the grant and their timeline.
So we will do that with the grant.
Okay, all right. Okay, let's see. We are at Social Services.
So sorry, did we get the the records director?
No.
No, at fifty percent?
No, no, that's a follow up for for the discussion later.
Social Services?
So for Social Services, they have.
Project. Project Room Key, ARPA rollover, and then general assistance. Yeah, don't see any.
Can you speak to that one on the ARPA rollover? I, yeah, she did present on it yesterday, but I just need clarification on that. Right now, it is in her budget. In terms of the rollover portion, it's just so that she can continue to use it going into fiscal year, the next fiscal year, but the dollars are there now.
Correct. She has the department had about two million dollars allocated for the project Room Key project. And from what I understood, based on the presentation, they anticipate they are not going to need five hundred forty three thousand dollars of data allocation from the current year. And they want to use that for the same purpose for fiscal year twenty three, twenty four. That's what they want to do.
So it'd be like an unassigned unassigned fund balance?
No, it will just be on a spend ARPA dollars that will be carried over the next year. Yes.
And we and because we do have, well, I don't know if this is a problem that is housing some of our homelessness. Okay, it's not it's not Pajaro.
No, we're not using this for Pajaro. Right now, we are actually using dollars from we we have two months worth of support from FEMA to house the folks for two months. The problem is that'll end at the end of the year with or that, yes, at the end of the year, at the end of the fiscal year. And this five forty three is still would still allow for that Room Key pro program to continue forward using the ARPA dollars. So it'd be for individuals that would otherwise be on the street.
I see Director Medina shaking her head.
Yeah, if it's money we've already allocated and we'll continue using it for the purpose that the ARPA funds were allocated, I can absolutely support that. And sorry, I missed it yesterday.
Yeah, and I think this is an estimate only, right? We don't know how much is available, will be available. Or is it the full amount that you think will be available?
That is the exact amount we have an agreement waiting and ready to for the board's decision.
And do you and do you anticipate any more being on a spend from the two million? No, okay.
We called something out yesterday. This is called the the P R A.
Yeah, probably room key, yeah.
Oh, oh, sorry, P R K, got it. Thank you. Yes, no, I I think we I indicated my support yesterday. Thank you.
Okay, so.
So will that be a yes for, is that right? So we have Ask You saying yes.
Ask You, Alejo's a yes, anyone else? Anyone else?
For Project Room P for ARPA funds that we've already allocated.
Yes.
Adams is a yes.
Adams. Anyone else? We got three votes there. Okay, let's go to Treasure Tax Collector. The machine machine she needed, we got that approved, okay? Let's go to Public. These are these are the these are the other items, okay? So C I P, C I P projects.
C I P projects, there was a presentation just by Public Works related to that. And so far, they were approximately eleven point seven, eleven point eight million dollars that were prioritized based on what the department was recommending and what they had heard from the Capital Improvement Committee and what they had also heard from the Budget Committee in terms of supporting a few projects. So from so far, we have just only from Supervisor Ask You supporting the seaside facility.
So these are all unfunded C I P projects.
Correct, they are funded, correct.
So these will remain, if they don't get funded, they'll remain on the list. And as we get more money in the future, they could potentially be funded.
And they could be funded out of the using funding for seventy eight. This will not touch the contingencies if you decided to fund them at this point. And we do have about twelve million dollars in that fund currently.
So just comment on these, you know, these came through the Budget Committee also. And so we had a chance to look at these a little more detail. I'm I I'll put my position down, being that we have the funds. These are all capital improvements. I I'm in support of every one of these.
So we do have the funds for these.
We do.
If you if you were to recommend all of these projects here, we will we do have the funds for them.
Yes, yes.
Right, and I'm supportive of this.
All right, I'm supportive too.
All right, so we have at least three votes for that. So all of them will be more.
Ghost, yeah, I just, and if I could just take a minute, like this seaside and community benefits facility in this project. I just want to thank the staff that has worked so diligently to move us forward, to identify all of the different partners, all the departments that have come together. We're talking about a multi departmental really center for county services, serving the entire peninsula. And this funding will get us to the point where we can go start soliciting some of the grants and state and federal dollars that we're going to need to get this thing done. So huge, huge appreciation to my colleagues for supporting this and to the staff that has heard incessantly from my office to bird dog this and keep it moving forward. So deep, deep appreciation.
Do we need to reestablish our support of these things now?
Well, I think there's three votes for all of them.
Yeah, so I'm in on that.
You're on board, okay. Lopez was on board, I think Church on board, yeah, everybody, so unanimous.
Lindsay, I hope Lindsay, if you're on the line, I hope you're hearing this. I know you were nervous yesterday when there wasn't any comment when we came forward. But I think it was to be clear, this is not money. This is that there's a separate account for these projects that accrues funds specifically to add these to our capital improvements plan.
That's why the list is always short, goes through the process and.
So thank you.
And we're only spending as much money as we have available. Next year, we'll have we'll we'll be look at other projects.
So hopefully, we build more into that fund for next year. But what I would also like to point out is that one of the projects here on this list for the for information technology, I think, is about three hundred thousand. We will also explore, right now, we're going to put it on the list as Fund for Seventy Eight. But there's also an assignment from the I T D department. We'll look at that to see if we still have available funding there. We may move that funding from the building improvement and replacement funding to that other assignment. So there may be something slightly different that you will see when this comes to the adopted budget, but just wanted to point that out for you.
And I just wanted to express on the King City courthouse. I mean, that that building was Supervisor Lopez well knows. It's in pretty bad shape and trying to, the court is reopened some service there and it should look like a dignified courthouse for the people of South County. So I'm glad that's on the list, something that Supervisor Lopez and I have strongly supported for some time. Yes.
Sorry, I have a question about the electric charging stations. So this is for county owned vehicles? Or or is it going to be for reg for people who have electric cars? And if they do, is there a charging situation where, you know, if I bring my electric vehicle in?
I want to charge for free, you know. I understand what you mean. So this this was presented to the board. I want to say maybe six to seven months ago, there was a plan from when we still had a staff on the sustainability program. And the plan for these charging stations was to be placed strategically at some of the libraries throughout the county. And there were two plans that were presented. One of them where the county could run these charging stations or have a contract with a third party agency that will do that. And the the plan was obviously that we could use it for vehicles of the county. But also if the public needed to use them, it will be open to them as well. But there, the plan was to also establish a charging structure at that point so that you actually there'll be a fee for those using it. Not necessarily for the county, because the county is already paying for that electricity directly. But for those members of the public, anybody that may want to charge also will be doing that. So there'll be a combination of that. And if you want, there could be a presentation to be made about this separately at a different point. But that's what was presented some time ago.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Thank you.
Because it helps offset some of the costs if we're at least being able to charge, which is much cheaper than gasoline, yes.
So the clarification that I need on the C I P allocation, since you will potentially be moving the I T dollars somewhere else, is there also a thought that perhaps if there's another project, would it be included as part of this only because you're going to have a balance? There's about twenty million and change to be spent. Is there something else that would come with that with the potential project? Or is these the the projects that are currently approved to move forward only?
So you mean a balance for those projects to be completed? Is that what your question was or the what do you mean about twenty million? When you make.
You have about twelve million.
Yes.
Available.
Correct.
Once you move the I T, that's going to put it back in the bucket. Is there remaining dollars that could potentially be allocated to a project that's not listed here?
It's potential, but one of the one of the approaches that we follow as a county is that we are trying to also be cautious and not use all the available funding. Because in case something comes up during the year and you have an emergency on a building and you actually need to use that funding, you could actually use this funding for that. You also, as part of the recommended budget, we are funding on a scheduled maintenance projects that could also fill into that category like nine hundred thousand. But we want to be cautious of that also. What we want to be able to do is work with Public Works on a long term plan. Because what we would like to do as well is that if you we see any bigger projects that are coming down the road, it'll be also prudent to start saving for that project in that fund. An example of that is the seaside clinic that was built a few years ago, where the Health Department entered into a partnership with Trump. They financed the initial construction of that facility. Then Nativity that floated that for a short period of time by paying that loan to Trump. But then the the Fund for Seventy Eight was used to actually pay Nativity that back and be make this an asset of the community. So it was a convoluted process. But if we were to be able to sell aside funding into this one for this type of bigger type of projects, I think there'll be also prudent for the county to do that.
Okay, do you need any time to tally it up everything and reprint?
And I know we're going back to the maybes, which are the two in H R.
Mr. Chair, can I make one clarification? I just want to make sure on that list of the approved projects under the C I P, we did add the Nasty money, right? That was in there at the very end of the list.
Yeah, the the lodging lodge replacement?
Perfect, yeah, okay. And then my only other request, and it wasn't on the list, but I'm hoping I'm just going to take the opportunity since we're here to ask for maybe five thousand dollars to put in a light over the trash can behind the facility at one sixty eight West Aliso, a wired light. I think that's been overdue.
We already had approved that a while back and it just never got done.
Yeah.
I believe.
I just want to make sure it carries over.
I believe it was directed to facilities. We can have them provide a follow up. One of the questions, I think, was in terms of how to get electricity to that specific location. And I think they were exploring a solar, probably a brighter light. So we can have facilities provide an update.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, because that that light is insufficient back there.
And just the one thing is, I don't see it on this list, but I did see it up here about the fifty nine thousand for Pajaro Park. I just want to confirm because it was not in the list initially.
It wasn't in the list initially. And one of the departments, oh, the board already approved that it was not on your list. So yes, I added it last night. So it it in between the prints and when I updated it, maybe didn't make it there, but it is there on this list that we have here. And so I think that it'll be prudent to just take a little bit of time to make sure that we double check this list before we present you a final summary. That would be okay with you, Supervisor?
Time, then I don't know if we want to break for a quick lunch and then come back?
Yes, I think that'll be a ideal.
I think you just have time to tally everything.
Yes.
I just have one more.
Yeah, I'd like to have one more.
Yes, okay, let's let's just go to last comment before we break. Supervisor Adams and Ask You and Church.
I think I'd like to put in for some heaters for this room when county council and one of the supervisors has to sit on their hands because it's so freezing in here. And the other one has to bring a shawl to. because it's so freezing in here, and the other one has to bring a shawl to, you know, be comfortable. We ought to be able to do something about that.
H five. Well, maybe we could have them adjust, cause at one point it was too hot, now it's too cold, you know, so.
Freezing. No, that's enough.
I, I'm liking it.
You just need to switch it to, I see who we're catering to here now, I forgot, I noticed no fan, now I get it.
Um, I just had a, as we continue to move forward, I know one of the things that we brought forward and the board committed to engaging with was, uh, looking into options for sheriff oversight, uh, functions, uh, whether it delay be eighty, eleven eighty-five or some others. We started the ad hoc committee process, we have a public forum that's gonna be happening, uh, this summer. And I do know that there could be, there will likely be costs associated with the recommendation that we bring forward. So I would just like to ask that, um, we retain some contingency for that purpose. When we bring a recommendation forward, that we have some funds available to, uh, to work with when that time comes, that was just a request.
Okay, um, supervisor Church.
It's just, um, in terms of going back to some of the maybes, one of the other ones we, to, we'd bring back for discussion was permit technician.
Oh yeah, you're right, you're right, I missed that one.
And I think the, the EPM also.
Oh yeah, sure.
It was emergency management, HR and, um, records.
Glenn, did you say, uh, the code compliance inspector?
No, it was a permit technician three, which I, you know.
Did we have any discussion around the code compliance inspector?
No.
I don't think we did.
So I know that that was on their list.
Nope.
Code co, code ply, code compliance inspector two.
Didn't have any support, yes.
Maybe we can have Craig just confirm, cause I thought there were two things that he really needed, wanted to make sure we're covered, I think one of them was the permit.
One was permit and one was the, the short-term rental.
Yeah, those were the two. Alright, that's fine, that's fine.
Alright, okay, so I think that we're good for now, we'll break.
Eleven thirty-five, what time do you wanna come back? Come back at twelve thirty? A little bit less than an hour? Alright, we'll be back at twelve thirty.
Alright.
Okay, Tess, whenever you're ready. Okay, Tess, whenever you're ready. Good. 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 There we go, good. 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 There we go, good. Good. Good.
Mic number six, mic number six.
Good.
Mic number seven, mic number seven.
Good.
County Council, mic number eight, mic number eight.
Good.
Mic ten, mic ten.
Good.
And this is, cell gets heat twelve, mic number twelve.
Perfect, can we make sure and do the wireless mic just in case?
Wireless mic, wireless mic.
Fantastic, thank you so much, Tess.
Is Supervisor Lopez on?
Okay.
Nope. Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, she's not there. And he just popped up on the screen. I hope you're feeling better.
Getting there. Thank you.
All right. Supervisor Askew is with us now.
Yes.
Okay, we're ready to roll on. Let's reconvene the Monterey County Board of Supervisors meeting. Mayor Pluck, can we call a roll?
Yes, good afternoon. Let the record reflect all supervisors are present with Supervisor Lopez appearing via video conference.
And is Diego Celis here to make the Spanish announcement?
Yes.
Okay, Diego, if you could make your announcement for Spanish interpretation.
Yes, muy buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Diego Celis. Seré el intérprete de español inglés e inglés español para la sesión de esta tarde. Por favor, si desea ser comentario público en español, hablar lenta y fuerte para poder escucharlo. Pago de hacer una pausa entre sus oraciones para poder interpretarlo. Muchas gracias por su atención.
Okay, we could do this two ways. We could go with the revised list first of all, and then come back to the positions that are maybes on the table, or vice versa. So with the, I think there was four. Yeah. There was the management analyst in the emergency management office. There's a permit technician in housing and community development. And then there's the program man, HR program manager, and the Qualtrics agreement in HR. I think those are the four I have.
Correct. I highlighted those for you in your list in Salmon and the big list. So the ones I believe were something that we need to come back to. So we could start, as you said, with the list of what has been so far recommended for funding in the adopted budget, or we could go back to that list. But right now probably it'll be a good start for you to know that we have used already $5.1 million out of the $7.9 million in appropriations, leaving about $2.7 million for the entire fiscal year. So in case something happens, that's how much you have left for the fiscal year.
Could I ask a question?
Uh, yes, we can start Supervisor Adams. Go ahead.
Thank you. So can you just tell me Ezekiel, what number would be optimal for us to have in the contingency fund to move forward? What would be the right number?
Seven point nine billion.
Okay, ten, ten. Let's hear ten.
That will be optimal, obviously, because the question is optimal, right? The optimal amount will be what is the maximum allowed in the policy. And I think it'll be up to the board as to how you feel comfortable going throughout the year. I think you want to compromise in something, maybe somewhere around half of that 50%, that you have some flexibility, but you are already past that 50% where you are right now. So.
And 50% would be the, would that be about, how much would 50%?
It'll be close to four million, three point nine change and change. Yes, yeah.
So we're far beyond.
Correct, I mean, and a half billion, correct.
Right, right. So, and it looks like the total, grand total is five one eight one that we've spent.
Correct.
Okay, that we're proposing. So how much would everybody have to take off as a percentage if we wanted to get to the 3.9?
As a percentage of the 5.1, you mean?
Yes.
Oh, all right. Let me do some math.
Well, I think it's being framed the wrong way because some of these positions are entire position. You can't just cut off 10% of a position. It doesn't work that way.
You couldn't have the person start, you know, two months into the year rather than, you know, 12 months into the year? I feel like there would be ways of doing it if we chose to do this and just spread it out evenly across the whole lot.
Yeah.
But I think it's more than 10% that we would have.
Yeah, that'll be about 20% because you're looking at the five million times two, yeah. To get to a million, you have to have at least a million dollars. That'll be like 20% reduction across the board. You wanted to follow that approach. Although in some instances that may be not feasible because of the position being a whole position. Also, some of the expenses may start right away at the beginning of the fiscal year. Yeah.
Okay, it was just a good question that I wanted to ask for my own edification. Thank you. So it'd be about 20%.
So we know what the total amounts are. Do we want to go to those, return to those four positions and decide whether we want to do with them? And we could start with.
Well, maybe I have a list for you.
Yeah.
I'll share it with you on the screen and emergency management.
Emergency management, management analyst. That's 162,000. Yes, CEO Delarosa.
Ezekiel, while you're doing that, can you also send the copy of what you shared with us to Supervisor Lopez?
Oh, yeah, Supervisor Lopez, I forgot about you.
Thank you.
It's not the first time Ezekiel.
I'm sorry about that. I just didn't realize you're not here.
Just tell him he should not get sick again.
That's the strategy.
Put it back on his.
Incentivizing.
Yeah.
So, okay, we need, I guess we both have questions.
Okay. While Mr., let me give you a second to do that. You got that done. That was pretty quick. Okay, let's go to Supervisor Church and then we'll go this way.
I just want to make sure I understand the process here. We go and we look at these, we put these in. We're gonna have to come back and cut. We still have to cut, so.
Yes and no, right? Because we tallied, Mr. Vega during lunch, he tallied the amount that we've approved so far. Yes, we could go back and cut from this if we choose not to. And then now we're just on the four that were on the table as maybes, and that's what we got to make a decision to fund them or not. If we don't, if we fund them, then will the amount will get added and less from contingencies. But we could also modify any of these things that we've given approval so far.
Yeah, and I, and I'm trying to see, you know, which is the best way to go forward here. And we can look at these and make, you know, say yes or no, or something in between. But it looks to me we're, we're looking at, we're still got to come up with. I don't even know what the board's feeling is here and what it wants for a contingency. I'm, I'm sort of feeling that one below three million is totally out, and I like to be up around three and a half. So, I mean, we could go and look at these and say, yeah, let's bring up some proposals on this, but we're gonna have to come back then and relook at them again too. So I'm just making my sure I have a perspective here, and I'm happy to go that way.
Yeah, let's, let's go through these four positions and then we see what gets added or not. And then we could then go revisit the entire list. And then some other options. As we, as I mentioned, when Supervisor Askew asked, what else, how else can we deal with the drop in contingencies? Obviously, when unassigned, the unassigned fund balance becomes available in November, the plan was to just have that replenish the strategic reserves. But we could say out of that, everything goes to reserve, but one million or two million could come to contingencies, to replenish contingencies as well. That is an option. But let's go through the four positions. Let's start with the emergency management.
Yep, yes. So that's management analyst two. The cost would be $162,000 for the year. And I also have a couple of other columns just for your reference at 75% and 50%. Just in case you wanted to look at something different or maybe evaluate these positions half year as we go into mid-year and see if there is anything that has changed. And when we present the budget, then your report, that could be an option also. Where you don't specifically take an action for those positions now and determine how the department is doing with their new finance manager that they use hires on and so forth. So you could evaluate that also at that point.
Okay, so let's open it up for a vote. Management analyst two in emergency management, 100, 100%, or we could do it at 75%? This means they'll delay the hiring for a quarter.
Through the chair?
Yes, let's go to Supervisor Askew first.
Thank you. So my understanding for that, that may position is to get the program up and running, but there may not be a need for ongoing. So is that an actual new position or is that a temporary staffing need that exists? I've heard multiple bits of information about that particular position.
The intent would be to keep it, to keep it in place, you know, to support her. But in talking to Ezekiel, there's actually an alternative position where if we wanted to do a temporary, it would be in the specialist category. Or maybe it was actually Irma speaking with Nick. Sorry, Ezekiel. I'm sorry, it's blending together. It was Nick Chulos I was speaking to, and there is a specialist. So if Irma could, could reference that, that would be at a temporary position.
It'd be a temporary position. It would be called the management specialist limited term, so it'd be fully loaded with benefits. But then once the assignment is no longer needed, the person is eliminated and they go through the layoff process.
Okay, and do we have anyone? I guess I just need clarification, like what is, is that a temporary role or is it an ongoing role?
Mr. Chairman and, and board members, if I can answer that question, it is an ongoing role.
It is an ongoing.
It is, it's an annual, the Homeland Security Grant Program is an annual grant that comes from the federal government and flows through the county to our partner agencies. And it's, it's the management and administration of that grant and other grants that I believe Ms. Scanlon is planning to attempt to get.
Yeah, and in her description, it says it's to work with contracts pre and post event MOUs grants, and it said the position is critical FEMA public assistance reimbursement.
Yes, all of the above. That's correct.
Enter graph.
So I think I'd be inclined to support it if we can, if we can, and I'm gonna piggyback by here Supervisor Chair, Vice Chair Church, oh my goodness, I'm so sorry, Vice Chair Church, and Supervisor Adams expressing maybe some support to bring the total contingency spend somewhere closer to $4 million with the four million remaining in the contingency. If as part of a package to get us to, and I don't know if a 20% across the board gets us there. I'm not, I'm trying to look through it quickly to see, you know, which ones are positions, where is there flexibility in this? I mean, my, my preference would be to take a closer look at the five deputy positions that we're offering to fully or 75% fund, given that there are vacancies. My other place that I would look at, you know, making some, some amendments would be the development set aside. That's a huge amount of money, 876, which I think maybe over half of, we maybe need to look at that. I thought it was closer to seven.
It is over half because that was the direction of the board. It was to provide an additional $100,000.
Oh, okay, so it's a seven seventy six plus a hundred. Okay.
Right.
So there would be to look at that number closely and to make, make amendments there to get us closer. And then maybe in across the board for everything else, it's not a staff position. But if we can get us, if we can agree to some amount of contingency reserve closer to four million, I would support this position.
Okay, I gotta, Alejo, Askew so far on the management analyst, Supervisor Church.
I'll go with that, following up on Supervisors Askew's comments here and, you know, and the development set aside, but also some of the community grants that we've, community funding we've put out here for some of these projects as well. I know we're gonna have to take a hard look at.
I'm good with funding the position without any of the additional cuts with instead the approach of taking a portion of the unassigned fund balance coming back towards contingency at the end of the fiscal cleanup.
Supervisor Adams?
Yeah, I'm, I'm still struggling with this process a little bit. If we, if we're able to find $800,000, then we're at 3.5 left in our contingency. The way my brain works, it's easier for me to think, okay, how do we get to eight?
We're mixing two things. Maybe we should just focus on the, on the position and come back to deciding if, where do we make reductions elsewhere in the overall tally of approvals that we've made so far.
We're also making, also making contingent additions. I'm making additions at this point that are contingent on an additional piece of the conversation.
The contingency fund, we have to get back to, see where, if we're wanting to make cuts from what we approved.
And so, could you tell me again, what is on the table with the management analyst from emergency?
So far it's 100% or we could decide if we want to go with 75%?
And we have, we already have three votes for 100%?
Yes, or we could decide if we all want to change it to 75.
That's for the management? It was 100% maybe I missed that.
We can make it 75?
Yeah, I'd be going for 75.
Let's, let's change that to 75. Everybody go to 75?
Good with that. Good with that.
Not the perfect way to do things here, but it is what it is.
Do you have a calculator on your computer so we can figure this out as we go along?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
The computer is a calculator, yes.
Okay, so tell us how much we've got in the.
Okay, but.
You have less now, yeah.
Yeah.
Because you added to the expenses.
Okay, let's go to the permit technician then. A one to 130, almost $136,000.
Okay, take 75% of that.
I'll support that.
Okay, we got, at 75%, we have Adams.
Church.
Adams, Church, anyone else?
You can throw me in there.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Okay, we've got three.
Okay, another 75%.
Okay. But these were, these will all add up to obligations next year at 100%. Okay, let's go to now human resources, the last two. Program manager and Qualtrics agreement. Program manager is at almost 227,000, Qualtrics 88,000.
I say 100% for Qualtrics and 75 for the new position.
Okay, we had, we did have three positions. Askew was actually a maybe, but Alejo and Church were yes on the Qualtrics. Permit technician three.
Permit.
At 75%, that was $136,000.
At 75%?
Yep.
I'd go 75% on the, on the, on the manager position and, and pull back on the Qualtrics. Just because I think we got to make some decisions here. I just, it's actually 66,000.
Okay, so I had Lopez and Alejo had previously said yes to 100%. Your church is at 75% for the program manager. Anyone else on the program manager? So we have three.
I'm going for 75% of the program manager.
35%. Lopez, you want, you're good at 75%?
That's fine.
And so am I. Okay, that's four votes. That has approval. Now the Qualtrics. And that one's a contract, so I don't think that's one we could cut at 75% unless we implement it later in the year.
Well, we're not going to have any employees to survey if we don't have.
Well, they, they, they could also survey the old way they've been doing it.
Yeah, I, I think I'm gonna pass on that for this year.
Okay, Adams is a no. Anyone else?
I pulled back on it to find the other position.
She's a no. Lopez or Askew? I'm a yes.
I'm, I'm a yes on that.
I would like to be a yes contingent on getting a remaining contingency balance in place.
So we'll put you as a yes and come back to this when we look at the overall thing. So we got Alejo Askew and Lopez is a yes. Okay, so now let's add that up. And now we can look at the overall big picture. Which only got worse.
It got worse. It got worse, definitely.
Yeah.
That's for sure. So now, hold on, let me just move something around so that I don't lose my totals here at the bottom. All right, so refresh this thing. So we're at $5.6 million of total expenditures. It was 5.1 before, and that will leave us with $2.2 million in the contingency account. And maybe I'll share that document instead now. So new share on the screen. So this is where we are, 5.6 million compared to the 7.9 available. That leaves us with 2.2 million. And I think that if the supervisors feel okay with this level of contingencies, I think that we could move forward. It just, the challenge is you feel confident with that. If not, obviously then we have to make, go through the list now.
Now, and refine it, right?
Can I ask Ezekiel, on average each year, how much is the unassigned fund balance at the end of the year?
Well, it varies depending on where we are. And I'm glad you asked that question. I will not recommend doing something like that. When you're counting on an assigned fund balance, that's an, it's not a very good financial policy for long-term sustainability. And we have done some of that in the prior fiscal years, but we only do that after we know how much an assigned fund balance that is. And I will not recommend using that for one, for ongoing expenses, only for one-time expenses. So you have a capital project or something like that, I would recommend using an assigned fund balance for that. Also, you gotta keep in mind that even though our strategic reserve is gonna potentially be replenished by a significant amount because of the advance that we get, we're still gonna be probably about 5% target as opposed to the 10% target in the policy at the end of the year. So we're gonna still have significant challenges and we are gonna most likely have another emergency that we're gonna have to respond to in the next 12 months. So that puts us in a very difficult position. So I will not recommend you doing something like that, counting on future on assigned fund balance to be used for something like this. But it's, it's your prerogative if you would like to do that.
But Mr. Rega, I just, if you could give us the number from last year, because I thought last year, and I think expectations or estimates this year that it was about $15 million in the unassigned fund balance, and maybe I'm wrong.
On the estimate, it was a little over $20 million for this fiscal year, for 2022, 2023, but things have changed. We have had a couple of emergencies and also the sheriff's deficit actually grew from what they had projected initially than the forecast and other things may have happened in the departments as well. So I'll just caution you, I'm not saying that the number could not be significant. I think it could still be significant. Maybe 20, maybe 15 million dollars. I don't know until we actually look at the final numbers, but I will caution you against counting into future one-time money for ongoing expenses.
And when, when, when is the, almost the accurate date where we do get that information of what, what do we have in an unassigned fund balance?
By sometime in November is when we will know, because the fiscal year closes by August when all the revenues are counted in. There are some specific steps that have to be taken by departments and the oil to control it to close the year. And then we put a report together that we bring to the budget committee in November and then to the board in early December to give you an overview on what we think we will be. But even those numbers are not audited, they're, they're very close. So we feel confident that they'll be very close to what the end numbers would look like. But right now I don't feel confident that I could give you a number and, and I will keep you some caution, providing caution to using those funds, because we don't even have them now.
Right. Well, idea would be just knowing that it could be revisited in November and the board, at that time, when it has accurate figures to make that decision whether to replenish the contingency fund or not, or allow all that unassigned fund balance to go to the strategic reserves. That's all we're kind of.
Correct. And then, but I will say, my recommendation will be that it goes to the strategic reserve first and then, and that's why it's in the budget book. Actually, that's the recommendation, but you could make any changes to that as you see fit.
Okay, let's go to, comments, go to Supervisor Church and Supervisor Adams.
So what, you know, where we're getting where it's 15 or 20 million, I'm, I only see this going strategic reserve. We need it there, especially going into winter. And we're looking at El Nino and also, I don't, I don't want to see us touch, touch that for contingency. But this year, or not this year, the previous fiscal year of 21, 22, there, there was 3.6 million left out of that. We allocated 3.1 to the sheriff. Is that correct? So there's a little bit available from that still?
Correct, correct.
That hasn't been applied anywhere?
Correct.
So, you know, it's a smaller amount and with, you know, that I might be in favor of adding to the contingency for this. But the, whatever we coming out of this fiscal year, it's going to be a larger amount and that has to really go for the strategic reserve. So that would be what I would, would favor in that direction.
Supervisor Askew?
Thank you. So I'm, I, thank you for being very clear in what you've just stated Ezekiel. I think it's what I've been worried about throughout this entire process. I, in terms of whatever we may or may not have available to us in November, I think it's incumbent on us to be fiscally responsible and put that money into the strategic reserve in alliance with our, in accordance with our policies. If we were talking about using it to prevent layoffs, that may be one of the only conditions in which I'd say like, maybe let's have a conversation. But right now we're talking, we're not, we're talking about adding at this point. So I, I, I hear my colleagues saying, hey, like, let's talk about it. Let's bring it all back and put it on the table again. I'm not sure I'm comfortable changing our policy to give that direction at this point. So I think it should come back and go in strategic reserve. And of course, if we're in a crisis, we can figure out how to have that conversation. So I just want to be very clear that that's my intention. And then in terms of the, I'm sorry, you mentioned that there could be some other money from the sheriffs.
No, from what I understanding, the 21, 22 funds that are left over was about 3.6 million, but we allocated about 3.1. I'm correct.
There's a, there was a report that went to the budget committee because of the budget shortfall with the sheriff's department, right? They have a budget shortfall of 4.9 million dollars for the current fiscal year, fiscal year 22, 23. Since we had had some positive results for fiscal year 21, 22, the board had made some decisions to use some of that to fully fund the strategic reserve, fund the contingencies. And after all of that was done, we still had about 3.6 million dollars left over from 21, 22. And we were so late in the game for fiscal year 22, 23, that we didn't have any other place to pull from to cover the gap in the sheriff's budget. So the recommendation to the budget committee was to use 3.1 million dollars out of the 3.6 of an assigned fund balance to cover that gap for fiscal year 22, 23. But that's what we have in hand is for the prior year. And then in addition to the 3.3 million, 3 million dollars and change, also there was a million dollars that was gonna come from another assignment and about $700,000 that will be coming from the compensated absence assignment. So actually the strategic reserve was a million dollars to cover the overtime cost for the sheriff's department for the response to the emergencies.
So it's not actual money?
Yeah, that money's not there.
So that money's not available for us to spend. I just wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page there. Okay. And so then my final point is, if we're looking to cut an additional, I'm saying this, it is about 1.8 million to get us to a $4 million reserve, then, you know, whatever percentage across the board, I'd be open to looking and seeing what that is.
Okay. And, and I wanted just, just to point out that the, the reason that the sheriff's department had that extra money is that it was ARPA money and they were not able to utilize it all. They were not able to hire. I remember coming to budget committee, they were trying to move that for radios and other things, and we decided not to do that. And, and now the following year, they had a significant overrun, I think mostly because of overtime. And now that's what you're saying, that 3.1 was utilized to offset that cost in the following, this current fiscal year.
Correct, correct. And then some of that, I think that the surplus of the sheriff had was not as significant as 3.1 million. But some of that helped because they actually performed well for fiscal year 21, 22. They had extra funds.
Yeah, but it was because of that ARPA funding.
Correct. They received ARPA funding.
Okay, CEO De La Rosa?
If your board would consider holding on the program manager for HR and also maybe applying that 75% to the commander and sergeant as we did to the deputy positions, I mean, it's not a lot, but maybe that would start the placing some dollars back in as opposed to removing them. For the HR position, we do anticipate that there'll be changes within this next fiscal year and just having that opportunity to address some of those going forward, whether or not this position would be one that would be requested or alternatively changed in the management structure there. That would allow for that to happen. So we would, if, if necessary, we could turn around and come back in November or early in the year, in the calendar year to make that determination.
Mr. Chair, I'd support the CEO's recommendation there on both those asks. And big policy picture wise, you know, I brought up that piece yesterday about ARPA as well. And just want to point out, we've already, we didn't follow that based on the request of one department today, but would also point out that there will be opportunity there as well if we agree on a policy of holding that line and requesting that those questions come back to us, because we've not gotten support on a concept like that. But as a one-time, as well to your point earlier about unassigned fund balance in the future, I think even an agreement to put 30% in this one year back into contingency. Again, there's no guarantee, but knowing that a percentage will go back to help us cover the second half of the year, I think would be a, a smart move at this point.
So it'd be cutting, would be then removing the HR program manager, put, take that off the table, moving the commander and the sergeant to 75%, so they both aligned with the other five correctional officer positions. Anywhere else? Yes.
Question on the, the additional, the five deputy positions, wasn't there the comment made that if they are able to go into the academy saying we've got these positions ready to roll? I don't want to cut them back. If they're, you know, we've got these positions ready to roll, you're gonna be graduating and, you know.
But those weren't the ones we were talking about though, right?
The five?
The commander?
Right, I thought you also added in the, the five.
I think the, the, the correctional officers were at 75% too.
And the five you already voted.
That was already decided. And the sheriff's department already said that works for them.
Could clarify, I mentioned doing with the sergeant and the commander what we did with the deputies.
Yeah. Just made them all the same timeline. Anywhere else? Where, where else would you want to refine this and to make the contingencies greater? There's a parks master plan, that's 350.
So we're back to where we started almost, so that's good.
Prior to lunch, yeah.
If, if we do this, what's the, what's, what's the amount that we're saving with this going to 75% in this manager?
Oh, he's have a couple of hundred thousand from the exchanges that you were recommending, a couple of hundred thousand. So we were at 2.5 million dollars available now. He was like 2.3 or so before.
No, but the HR manager was 226 alone.
Yeah. I hold on, let me see. I think I refreshed it, no? No, I think I already took that out.
So it's more than the 200 though?
It's, it's a little more than 200,000, but it's using the ballpark. But it's not here anymore. You look at the program manager. Not here. Yeah.
I, I think we need to look at the, at the community asks too in the DSA.
I agree.
So the community asks are also on this list. So maybe you want to go down the list, just go one by one and see if there's anything that you would like to change and then maybe we'll do that. So these are the ones that are currently in, that are in the contingency fund. I'm gonna try to enlarge it a little more. And we'll focus on that column that is labeled contingencies. Can you see a little better?
Ezekiel, are you able to tell us what the total amount of the community asks and DSA is? And if we were to cut that by 20%, how much does that get us?
I don't have a sub total readily, but I could give it to you if you give me a little bit of time.
975,000 for the community asks. 975,000.
Are you included in that, the DSA supervisor, Alejo? No?
No.
And then the DSA is 876?
Yep.
So that's like 2 million?
Yeah, I, I don't know if I'm in favor of a complete cut across on these, because some of these, like the two shelters are, you know, these are, these are really essential. These are people that, that are in, you know, that are hurting. And some of the other things we're looking at here, from the historical society to, you know, you know, even the, the complex or the promise, I mean, they're, it's, they're all need, they're all needful and they're all good programs. But I, I don't know if we want to cut from the shelters.
Yeah, and they, when they use a clarification, the Casa Nochebuena Shelter, they actually had requested for 100,000 dollars in funding and that funding actually was already included as part of the social services budget. So this 100,000 dollars that you see here is not affecting contingencies. It's being funded from the social services budget. So if you, that you will not be cutting that, you make a reduction. And I will not recommend you to cut that because they're already specifically funded for that. But the other shelter, if you potentially could reduce that, that will be, that will, it is contingencies.
So it's, so it's 875, not 975?
I, I, I think take out 20, take out 25 of the historical, because I think they have two programs there and I think it's, can be an easy.
You funded that 75%, you mean?
Yeah, funded it 75.
Do I hear support from the entire board on that? So I hear, I saw three heads nodding at least, Adams, Askew, Church. So we have three votes at least. So we'll go to 75% on that one. And then we have the community association of Big Sur asking for 75,000.
We could take 25 away and let, let it be.
So funded that 75% as well. Any, any, do I hear any more? So Askew, Adams.
The second option going on here, yeah.
I know. I have to, Askew, Adams, anybody else? And Church? Like he's 75, so no. Let me just make the right math, not, not multiply by 75, but 75%. All right. So Casa Nochebuena, we're gonna leave that as is. The Schuman Hard House, 100,000. That's a shelter. Do you want to leave it as is in general? Or do you want to also do 75? That seems, leave it as is. And we'll go to the next one. Salinas Valley Promise, 250,000. Do we leave that one as is? Or you want to make any changes to it?
What does 75% equal?
75% of that, I'll tell you right now.
About 62, 500.
Approximately, yeah. So that'll be 187,000 as opposed to 250, if that's what you would like to do.
Maybe we should just make it 200,000 straight, take 50,000.
Do I see more than one person saying 200,000?
I, I'd support that and the same thing with the, the complex.
200,000, two votes for that or?
Yes.
And Askew as well? Is that a yes? Okay.
As hard as that as it is, it is, I didn't make the call series, but.
It is difficult. I know you're, you have a very difficult job, so I don't envy you. I'm just trying to organize you, but it's really you are making the hard choices.
Let's make regenerative 75%.
Okay, 75,000 for that one?
Great for that.
Yeah, great.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I need to manage yours.
Please, let's don't touch the development set asides if we can.
Well, I could tell you where we are now and see what you, what you feel after we did these ones. So let's refresh this and we are now. At. We're 2.7 million dollars, 5.1 million. So yeah, we haven't made that much progress since lunch. So.
I'm sorry, say those numbers again, please.
Boy, it can be.
2.7 million dollars left in contingencies. So that we are about the same as where we were with lunchtime. Yeah.
I think we have to look at DSA.
Changing.
How about?
Because we added a bunch. I think we have to look at DSA.
And the Parks Master Plan, 350?
We have to look at both of them. We have, everything's on the table. There are no sacred cows.
God, Wendy, killing me.
Let's go to, hold on, hold on. Let's go to our CEO De La Rosa, please.
On the DSA, I know we don't really want to make reductions there, but since we will be looking at what's left in funding from ARPA in November, perhaps just reducing it by the necessary amount and then turning around and providing that as part of ARPA revenue with the idea that we're gonna come in the next budget and as you've mentioned, you know, exploring the removal of that cap or what that would potentially look like into the next year. This would allow, there's still dollars that were included in the budget and it'll allow them to do what they need to do. And then by November, you would potentially be able to backfill this, the amount here at 876, you would be able to backfill whatever amount you removed as part of this process.
So the overall bottom line to what you've just said is they would not be going below the 876. It would just be coming from a different funding pool.
In, in November, yes.
In November?
Yes.
If, if funding is available?
If funding's available.
So it's, there are a few ifs.
Yes.
I would prefer to leave them as negotiated yesterday personally.
Thank you so much, Chris. I feel that way so strongly.
But we're cutting from community and not cutting from other places.
I, I think we gotta find some cut. We just cut from community, everything, everything's gotta be considered here.
It seems like I see Church, maybe Alejo and Askew saying we need to cut from the DSA. So what do you propose to cut?
25%?
25%?
This is killing me.
Well, it didn't kill you when you, we could cut the community groups.
So if that is okay with the three supervisors?
Can you give me a, a number, what this is going to come down to?
It would be 467, 467 instead of 876.
467?
Six fifty seven.
Fifty seven, I mean.
It'll be six fifty seven instead of eight seventy six, so it's about two hundred thousand.
Two hundred nineteen thousand.
This is killing me.
That gets us close to three million almost on that side.
I can support that.
Can we go back and look at at our internal um positions rather than taking from the D S A? That it's not just the big people. The Arts Commission funded so many little organizations all up and down the county. And I guess Chris must see them because I see them.
We have three votes for that. Um we we are gonna go look to look at the other positions too right now. That's next.
Right. So we have, I think that we look at the community requests already, D S As and community requests, so we could go back down the list you would prefer. Uh start looking at anything else that we could potentially reduce to reach your target right now. We're at two point nine five eight million dollars left over in contingencies. And you're trying to reach three and a half million dollars, then we need at least half a million dollars more.
And and uh Parks, the Parks Master Plan, three fifty?
Three fifty is that, do I hear from?
What 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 does the board think about?
What does the board want to do with that? Leave it funded or look at one time funding later if it's available? What do you want to do?
Or 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 maybe you could remove it now and then look at uh using that as an ARPA project. Yeah, a- and at that time.
It could, I have
Yes.
Comment. What I'd like to know is the three fifty, is that estimated for one year or is that the ti- the entire project?
This is public works, let's see if they're here. I think that they sound estimate.
They said that that was to do the the last time.
It's to do the project. It's a, it's a one-time cost. It would be done within a year. And I think it can be done for three hundred if we want to cut fifty there.
I'll go with that.
So I hear two two votes for two hundred thousand, is that what I heard, instead of three fifty?
I I think it's one of those things that could wait. Uh it's not as urgent, and we could look at it in November and with ARPA or with unassigned fund balance.
So two votes for three hundred, one vote for.
I could
Wait.
I think reviewing it in November when we've got clear unassigned fund balance would be the wise decision, although I really want to see this happen.
Yeah, I I just want to put in perspective is with the park and Paharo hanging on to us, this is kind of integral part of that. Now, if we gotta wait till November, that's, you know, I I can go that way, but if we don't address this, we're not addressing that park. We're just gonna kick this thing down the can again a little bit more, so.
But we did increase their funding to the fifty nine thousand, so we did do that for this year, temporarily for this next year. The parks is, it's gonna take some time anyways. We're just delaying that study from being done for three months to get it started.
Yeah, it's just that we need that study to get a a long-term plan going here. Otherwise, next budget year, we're gonna throw another fifty nine and then another fifty nine after that.
Agreed.
Okay.
So I don't hear any uh on on any majority for either of the two options. One of the options is.
What do you want to do on the parks? You want to cut it, or do you want to have this come back in November? Or or uh reduce the funding or have it come back?
Could we just reduce the funding by fifty thousand and and get a strategic plan done? And just have it be, you know, I can't even imagine fifty thousand is gonna make the difference between, maybe it's between a platinum and a gold. But I don't, I I'd like to see people get, I'd like to see them get started on this as soon as they can rather than having to wait because y- you're right, it isn't just um it's all of the parks throughout the whole county.
We'll just have to look then to cut cut more. If if it's your goal to get contingencies up, you just have to cut from other places, I'm just saying. Um so it looks like there's three votes to reduce it to three hundred thousand.
Correct.
And then I've got another one I'd like to bring up with the project room key, the ARPA rollover that we're doing. I'd like to take a look at pulling that down and putting it back into the D S As, so they don't have to. It's a contract, an existing contract already? Okay.
Existing contract in partnership with the city of Salinas that we want to see continue. Um if we do not roll that over next year, it will become a completely city of Salinas program. Monterey County will not be a partner in that program.
And even if we took off a hundred from it, it'd still be that circumstance.
It really needs to be the whole five forty three.
Okay, thank you for telling me that.
Okay. Let's see, let's go back um, start from the top on these positions then.
I think that's easier, yeah.
Yeah.
If you look at the.
Instead of jumping around?
Yeah. You look at the small, the smaller printout, and I'll display that on the screen for you. Also trying to make it a little larger.
Okay.
What the board has approved for uh with funding for this will be the after-action report for sixty thousand. I seen uh comments on that. The next item is the mobile clinics for a hundred and forty four thousand in partnership with the CEO Salinas, where they provide ninety six thousand.
We wanted, we wanted to reduce that twenty five percent. It just means less, less clinics they could offer on a more the the budget.
So I hear two people of seventy five percent of that?
Yes.
Okay, three votes.
Forty four divided by four.
So I heard.
Reduction of thirty six thousand.
Yeah, so I hear a board, I read Askew, Alejo and Church. So I'm gonna make that change.
And Adam.
It was Adams, not me. Oh, I'm sorry. Got the wrong person.
And on the encampment. We're going, yeah, I I don't see the, I you, could you scroll back to where you, there you go. Yeah, the 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 encampment mitigation program, twenty five percent reduction there, a hundred two seventy five.
Do I hear, yeah, so is that something that the majority of the board wants to do seventy five percent reduction?
Twenty five percent reduction.
Okay, so I see three votes, so I'm gonna change that. But I have to go back and forth.
Oh, got it, that's right.
So maybe I'll, what I'll do is I'll ask my staff to do it. If you're listening to me, just to make this change, I don't have to keep going back and forth. So go ahead and make the change. On this one, if you're up, it is specific to your department, make that change, and then I'll just refresh it once uh we're done with the full list. So I don't have to keep going back and forth. So this will be reduced to seventy five percent. Let's let's move on to the next item on the list.
Okay.
The Community Association of Big Sur, I think that one was already reduced. It was originally seventy five thousand. Custodial services for multi-use facilities.
These are kind, these are fixed, fixed costs, right?
Yeah, I'm not sure that we want to reduce that.
Yeah, let's keep going on to the next one.
The development set aside was already reduced, and then we had the first five requests were four hundred and fifty thousand. I don't see any comments on that one, so we'll move on to the next one.
It there's, it's a big chunk of money. I mean, if if something, whether, can we do ten percent? Out of this?
Fifty thousand.
So here two for fifty thousand reduction to bringing this to four hundred thousand, is that, do I if I hear one more vote from either Adams, Lopez or Church?
I I I express support. I don't know if two others.
I'll be supportive if we're just trying to trim in light of the budget.
Okay.
Not not that we want to do it, but.
So I did hear then three at least, Church, Alejo and yes.
Taking it from four hundred fifty to four hundred?
Yes.
Okay, so I think I see two only. I see Askew saying no.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes.
Oh, okay. So we have three votes with Adams, so that will be brought down to four hundred thousand. Veronica, you could make that change, and I'll refresh it in a minute. Uh then um for the management analyst two, which one is this one? I have to go back and look at what department is this. I have to look on the other side, because I don't have the department here right now on the list.
One, two.
I think that's the one probably for emergency management, the one that we just added, I think.
I was thinking.
Yeah, that's the one for emergency, emergency management, yeah. So that one was just done, so no worry about that one. And then the next one is the seventy five thousand for the Historical Society. I think that was reduced already.
Yeah.
The commander position was reduced already, the sergeant as well. The Sonny Mesa funding is what the board approved already at fifty nine thousand. The permit technician was already reduced at seventy five percent, I believe. And then we have the second muse request, the regenerative monetary county request for seventy five thousand, that was.
That was reduced as well.
The reduce, the deputy sheriff corrections are funded at seventy five percent. These two requests here for community requests for Salinas Valley Promise and the soccer complex were reduced already. Uh Schuman Hard House, that one we haven't reduced, it's still had a hundred thousand. The strategic uh parks plan at three hundred thousand, that was reduced from the original three fifty. Temporary staffing for the clerk of the board.
Could that go down to one twenty five or one hundred? Ezekiel, that is a estimate for a year.
Yes.
If you could do seventy five, um would you be okay with that?
Right. So I asked my staff to make that change. I don't have to leave the screen. And then we'll go.
Three votes for that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, just, I'm good.
So you saw that my staff request, so we had to have Church, we have Alejo and Adam and Adams and Askew supporting that, so. Thank you. And then the vacation short-term rentals, the department request a hundred twenty three thousand.
Anything that was needed to get the work done.
To get the work done.
It's not gonna happen.
So we are at four point eight million dollars. It looks like, let me refresh this, four point seven seven million. And that leaves us with three point one million dollars, so three point one five million dollars.
That's just, I don't know.
Another million.
I don't know where we can find agreement to get down another million. I would things I'm gonna suggest, we don't have to go as far unless someone else has suggestions.
I'm I'm good with this.
I'm good with this.
We already cut positions as as much as we could and cut from community.
But you had a third one? On this one, I hear at least two of them saying okay with this.
Good. Any other colleagues? Do you want to keep cutting?
Is there anywhere else Supervisor Adams or Church that you see that we could make reductions?
I just want to put money back into the D S As. Quite frankly, that's the only thing I can think.
That's, that's trying to make the problem worse.
Well, nothing's gonna make me feel better about this. I can tell you that at all, ever.
Sure, to three fifty.
But you know.
I mean, three, three hundred fifty more we could get.
Budget where all of a sudden it'd be in.
I mean, Glenn, we could, I I I you know, it's gonna take Parks Department a minute to pull together a proposal for a Parks Master Plan. Um and I would love to be able to see what that proposal is and sign off on sort of knowing what we're getting from that. It would be, you know, if we make a commitment to say like that's on our priority list for November. If there is val- uh fund balance, which we're hearing, don't count on it, but also, you know, it's it's one, it's one spot that that we have to work with.
And and we could give direction to schedule it for November, so that the parks comes back. Put on the agenda for November, and we'll guarantee that's gonna come back for action at that time when we know what our unassigned fund balance or ARPA, remaining ARPA funds are.
So we've already cut it fifty, fifty thousand.
Let's go to the C E O, and then we'll go to Supervisor Church.
I'd like to hear from Tom Bonnigan in terms of these three fifty. What could potentially be put in place within the next few months that absolutely is necessary with the idea that you would return in November for consideration of of potentially the balance. I'm just wondering, like you, like Supervisor Askew noted, it's gonna obviously to get off the ground, but then what potentially what we need to do? And what the estimate, even if it was half of what the three fifty, and then with the thought to bring back the the balance in November.
Uh sure, thank you. This is Tom. Um so as noted, we really won't. This is our best guess estimate based on other recent work by other counties to do a countywide Parks Master Plan. But um the proof is in the pudding when we actually get proposals to see how the costs come in. So if it helps your board, what what we could do if directed is run an R F P process with the scope of work, a proposed scope and get professional proposals back, and then we'll really have a good picture of of what we would be getting for whatever the dollars cost and could return to you at mid-year um to make a final decision on on how best to pull the trigger. Maybe we would need just fifty thousand seed money for some staff time, run that R F P process, and then have a real number to work from.
You give the the staff seat time uh now, and then we'll schedule this for November.
I I I could go with that um under the consideration that if we we have a good plan here, whether we use the ARPA or contingency funds, we're gonna look at at funding this because there's just a lot hanging on this at this point. How long um, Tom? Will it take to really put together a master plan once it gets going in your estimate?
Once we hire a consultant who will do a lot, a lot of the, excuse me, heavy lifting. It will probably be about a year's worth of work, maybe not quite that long, but it's a fairly extensive undertaking.
I have a question.
I I was just gonna say I'll support um, you know, quitting it off and and putting fifty thousand seed money.
Okay, I I'm supportive of that too, Supervisor Adams.
So Tom, if you've only, if you've got fifty thousand seed money, how are you gonna go out for an R F P to find someone if you don't know for sure that we're going to have the backup funding to do the plan? I'm not sure what the fifty thousand seed money will, you know, will that advance the project?
That's that's to put out the R F P and bring that back, and then at that point, we'll get actual estimates from different po- um consultants potentially, and then we'll make a decision using ARPA or unassigned fund balance in November.
I guess I was just thinking if an R F P is generally you put down the scope of what it is that you want.
C E O.
What the R F P will allow you to do is actually put the bones together of what you would potentially need for the actual plan. Um there's the hope is that there'll be obviously resources to support it, but that work can begin to lay out what exactly we need. So if you give them seed money where it's, whether it's at fifty or seventy five thousand, it'll allow them to start spinning the wheels, and then when they put it out, they'll get back the response, and you'll have a better idea what the actual amount should be, whether three fif- well, three fifty includes this work that's gonna be done now, whether two hundred and change is gonna be enough, or are we actually talking for a lo- about a larger amount or a less amount? Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Yes, just to for clarification on on this whole thing is when this comes back, I'm, I'm I'm for funding it, whether it's gonna, wherever we're coming, it's coming out of here, whatever number which realistic that it comes forth on, because we have to do this, but I also want to give us a little room here on more contingency uh for this, through the first six months anyway, and I think this gives us a little bit more we, in case something really disastrous comes up and we don't have it. I understand that's the circumstance, but this has to go through, and I'm really, really strongly in support of it, and I'm gonna be not very supportive of much of anything else that comes forth, contingency until this is approved, really.
Okay, um we got, so Supervisor Church, Alejo, anyone else on Askew?
On what? On?
On the to fifty, approving fifty thousand and with direction
To bring it back in November.
And we'll get a fixed date in November.
Yeah, and I'll just, I'll just reiterate that, you know, we've got a quite a bit of park, uh county parkland in District Four that has zero resources being expended and zero plan for how we're going to manage it. So I'm fully committed to getting this in place, and um I think the other piece of it that we need to be really thoughtful, we did a Parks Master Plan with, I don't know, it would have been at some point ago uh where we had someone come in. Yeah, thank you, Chris. I was like, I was just texting Yuri. I was like, I don't remember when that was. Um but I think we need to be really realistic about the ongoing resources that we have to manage parks, and what what we didn't do well last time was develop the master plan with sort of like, in a perfect world with unlimited resources, what would our park system look like? Well, we need a master plan that's gonna acknowledge that we don't have unlimited resources, and realistically, how do we build out and manage a park system with the resources that exist here in Monterey County? So I'm fully on board Supervisor Church and look forward to supporting this in November.
And I'm supportive of it as well.
Okay, um it's, I think there's uh at least four votes for that.
That's correct.
Supervisor Lopez was supportive. I didn't hear him.
No, not on, not on that one, sorry. I would rather make a commitment and go. Uh I agree that those evals were done, I think, in twenty sixteen of the parks, but they were not a master plan. There was an attempt at a master plan. I think we need a real one, and I'd like to see us commit to that, but I get it if we start at fifty.
Yeah, and and I would, I would, and I would just tell you, master plan doesn't give you the things you want. It just gives you a plan and some recommendations and and highlight series in need. And the, to carry out the master plan is And the, to carry out, the master plan is millions of more dollars that, that, as Supervisor Askew was pointing out. Um, come with a serious budget commitment, parks are not cheap to maintain and construct. Okay, we got direction on that, so that reduces another two fifty? What's our new number?
We're at three point four million dollars available. Uh, contingencies is closer to the three and a half that you were targeting, so.
Yeah.
If you're okay with that, we can move forward or.
Supervisor Church is good, I'm good.
I think the only other place that we can get is when we start cutting deputy positions out, and I don't know that there's an appetite for that, so.
Too good? Yes, yes, uh, Supervisor Lopez, you're good now with this?
Yeah, begrudgingly, yes.
I, I, all of us begrudgingly, trust me, yeah.
I know, but I gotta state it.
Let let it be on the record, everybody begrudgingly approve this budget, because we have to cut from a lot of areas that we care about, um, definitely. Um, okay, um.
So we have direction.
That's the direction?
Yes, thank you.
And any last comments? All right, then that will, we can adjourn our meeting? Was there, oh, let me see, hold on. We're gonna go. Okay, got it. From yesterday? Oh, yeah, we forgot. Go ahead.
Uh, from closed session, there are no reportable actions.
All right, perfect. I forgot about yesterday. All right, we'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you very much, thank you to our staff, uh, for being very patient with us through this tedious process. Okay, see you next week. Jack.